Call the meeting to order, let's rise and salute the flag. I pledge the flag of the United States of America to the Republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, and liberally and just as one. Hello, can you please read the certification component?
The time, date, and location of this meeting was published in the Ad break to our question post those votes were in the office of the town for Lake Wood these forty-eight hours and the public has the right to attend this meeting and reasonable comprehensive minutes of this meeting will be available for public inspection, this meeting meets the criteria of the Open Public Meeting Act.
Roll call.
Mr. Grunberger, Mr. Garfield, Mr. Franklin, Mr. Sable, Mr. Plantz, Mr. Hertzel, Mr. Renner, Mr. Isison, Mr. Grapples, Mr. Meyer.
Here. Go through very fast. Okay, confirmation of recording stands?
Yes, the recording is on, as are the webcam.
Okay, swearing in our professionals.
You sure from testimony before the board of the board of the House?
Yes. Before we start, I just want to say one thing, Mr. Fetter is over here, and Lake Wood was a great person, passed away this week, Stephen Fetter, who's a great special person, will all miss him, on behalf of the whole plant, our condolences to your family, you and your family, wish you all well. Okay, number four, the normalization resolution.
Yes, I was just advising Mr. Meyer, I don't think he was here at the meeting where we were, we're acting on these boards, so he'll be abstaining from the resolution, and Mr. Plantz, I believe he already weren't here or been sat down for conversation months, as well as he should, but of course, if for a while, everyone else can go on the others.
Not number two.
So the first is SD twenty-one ninety A, amend change to new site plan exactly.
Move. Move, second, all in favor, aye. Aye, number two.
SD twenty-one sixty-seven, amend site plan.
Move, move, second, back to second, all in favor, aye.
SD twenty-three twenty-six, major subdivision.
Move. Move, move, second, second, all in favor, aye.
And SD twenty-two seventy-seven, major site plan.
Move, second, all in favor, aye. Okay. The correspondence.
First in the correspondence is SD two thousand eight, Mr. Flannery is here on this one, this is Berkshire Investment Holdings LLC, this is previous subdivision approval that the board had approved a number of years ago, and out of concern regarding the lack of community buildings in the area, the board requested that one of the duplexes be turned into a synagogue. Unfortunately, during that process, there was either risk communication or the resolution wasn't properly updated to reflect the variances required because we used one residential synagogue. Mr. Flannery detailed that, but I also gave you copies of the minutes from the meetings, as well as the resolution for the board made the request to change that due to the synagogue.
Aye.
John, do I need to be sworn for this?
This letter from testimony before the board of the House?
I do, Brian Flannery Jackson, New Jersey. The letter I submitted lists the variance, and what happened, I can give you, I'm gonna go real quick. January of two thousand fifteen, we submitted a buy right application, completely conforming. We had a, in March of two thousand fifteen, the board approved it, at that time, the board said, there's no other shools around, there's other applications, kind of twisted the applicant's arm, and said, put a shul in here, even though one wasn't required, and he said, okay. So they agreed that at that time, if the first unit in front, there no longer be a inflection, there's a big shul, and the board said, put it in the parking lot, and we showed this nine parking lot with a plan on parking. That's what the board saw, that's what was, when we came back in June, for the memorialization, that's what was memorialized. It's my opinion that the board wanted this relief, granted all that relief at the time. The applicant would be happy to build a duplex there, but he's agreed to build a shul, it needs relief for the shul. The only variance that I think is really needed, because the engineer's office looked at this like it was a standalone shul, and they went with the one acre lot and all these other things, I don't think that's needed routinely, this board and the zoning board have, as part of a residential development, approve them all the time, it fits on a lot, it's good to go. We do need a variance for parking too close to Route Nine. We can eliminate some of that parking, that doesn't make any sense. So we're here asking for a clarifying resolution, that the board intended to grant the relief, and if you think it makes sense for the parking variance, it's close to Route Nine, the reality is, you can have two lanes on the shoulder, and a sidewalk, and still never have to move this. I think John Franklin would agree with me, he hasn't been able to get one lane there in thirty years, none of us are gonna be around by this time.
Next year will be fifty years.
Fifty years.
Next year will be fifty years if we had that need.
So, Brian, if they ever do one.
If they ever do one, if they can eliminate the parking.
How many parking spaces need this?
We don't need a variance, we need five parking spaces, we have five parking spaces right in front of the building, we can do parallel parking spaces next to it, if they ever need to eliminate it, they can eliminate it, and then the people have to walk, but...
So what's the, the variance is right now that the parking is too close to Route Nine?
Yes.
Not a parking variance?
That's correct, that's correct, not too few parking spaces.
But you're too close to the...
Parking spaces too close.
Your choice is right now, that if you want, we can eliminate the parking space and you don't have...
We'll do whatever the board prefers.
Chair, I'd like to reflect that Mr. Renner got in with Mr. Flannery's first meeting.
Okay, I personally, I don't know, we'll hear what the board says, but if it ever happens, I wouldn't mind, we should have the parking till then.
But is that the only relief they're seeking?
Well, the other relief that's listed is in, trying to see when it was, Bill Schwartz, in February two thousand eighteen, when he reviewed the plan, because the township engineer looks at it before he signs it, he said, oh, you should have a variance for the size of a lot, because you're putting a shul on lots at nine, you should have a variance for the lot width, but it's a setback, because he compared it with the HP seven, which is somebody putting a building on a one acre lot.
Self standing.
Chair, do you all know if we need more? I don't think any of them. If the board feels they need them and want to give it to us, good, if the board says they don't need them, I'm sure RVE will agree with the board that we don't need those. So we're flexible on that, flexible to the point, if you don't want the shul, the applicant's happy to put another family in there and provide another housing opportunity, you guys know them all about that.
Thank you. Any questions, any board members?
How many parking spaces can you make if you bring in the parking?
Well, there's fifteen head-on parking spaces here, if we eliminate them, so we're within the desired physical section, we would have five parallel parking spaces, and five on the other side.
But we're losing five if we're making it now.
Lose a ten, lose a ten station, and all we're doing is not having some pavement here, that maybe another fifty years from now, the state comes in and wants that, and why didn't the state have that? But if they did, anybody fifty years from now, getting eliminated that pavement for the next fifty years, additional ten cars in the park.
Just one other thing, as indicated on the plan, you also have, what is it, six less houses?
Yes.
So, if you look at the left side of the plan, on Albert Boulevard, you now have opportunity for on-street spaces along that front.
Right, that's right, the board has to see our whole thing, we're doing thirty-two foot wide pavements, so Terry's absolutely correct.
They get the parking or the cantor?
Well, we can't...
Mr. Flannery, is that the whole site right there that I'm looking at?
That is the whole site that you're looking at.
Where is the proposed shul?
The proposed shul is always to be, so first unit closer to Route Nine.
Now, what happens if that's not used as a shul, all the people who live in this community still have to go somewhere and park somewhere, right? You know, so...
Yes, and there are other shools in the area, ordinance, the ordinance does not require in any place the shul, the ordinance requires, if you have more than twenty-five units, you have to have five percent open space set aside. This property has substantially more than five percent open space set aside. The applicant didn't do this because he was required to, or because he wanted to, he did it because the board asked him, at a significant expense.
And we just did not put in a resolution, the setback for the parking?
Correct, my assessment of it is, if Dave Magno had been reviewing the ordinance, the proposed resolutions like he does now, he's very thorough and picked it up, I was not that thorough, nobody else that reviewed it was that thorough.
Well, we're not gonna mention the board attorney either, I think that's...
I think it was in the midst of the public hearing when the board said, we'd like to make one of the shul, and now we might have to say that changes the...
I think there's another part, the same equal amount of duplexes other side, further north of it, correct? We just care easily for that.
And I brought that in case somebody asked, and this one actually shows this parking lot, and it shows the units there as well, and that site plan includes a parking lot in their front open space that was set aside because it was a...
This is on top of this, or this is on top?
It's on top, it's a different scale and it's on top.
So do you have a...
Nine additional duplexes.
Do you have a schematic of the shul itself, like an architect or anything?
I was...
How many square feet is this?
Well, it's going to be a fifteen hundred square foot shul, the sanctuary, my recollection of it was like nine hundred without...
So this is not a large building, it's comparable to the size of a home?
This is a community shul for...
Yeah, the size of a duplex.
These new houses to have, have a place for...
Okay. Mr. Jackson, left up in the moment.
I think since they're asking for a variance, you did notice, correct?
No, we did not notice, yeah, it was a clarification, because the assumption was this was fully noticed in two thousand and fifteen, and two thousand and sixteen, if the resolution had said this relief was granted, we wouldn't be here today.
If it's some correspondence and the board is just interpreting its own kind of resolution.
I would ask for a motion on that.
Okay, I'll move a motion to accept the relief as presented.
And leave the parking space, leave it as a shul?
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
No.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Plantz.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you. Look, do you respect the...
I was gonna say, Mr. Fetter, could you please send me a proposed rider or amendment to the resolution, and I'll review it, and then we'll attach it to the resolution if it's satisfactory to the board's test.
Okay, number two.
We do have two administrative minor subdivisions listed on here, in front of Mr. Hertzel is a copy of the map, as well as Terry's review letter indicating no variances are required, these are in accordance with Section nine of the ordinance for the Ochswee requests, they just require by committee agreement of key...
Hello, you reviewed it, there's no variances whatsoever. On the Ochswee, Ochswee thirty, okay, do we have a motion to go along? Move, we have a second.
Aye.
Mr. Meyer, second, roll call.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Plantz.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ally, was there one more correspondence to talk about?
Yes, I received by email something from Mr. Auerbach about support on...
Is that, oh, you want that one?
I'm aware of that one, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Auerbach indicated he would be bringing exhibits for you, because it was still left in, and I don't have anyone to provide you.
I'm not so, if I may, even if there are exhibits, because...
Is incoming, Mr. Auerbach?
No, I'm sorry, there, we know the application, Mr. Jackson asking?
Yeah, we need to put on record what we're talking about, what case, what...
I'm sorry, SD twenty-two forty-one, Tom Matura, twenty-one eighty-four, they're both very similar.
What was the second number?
Two-one-eighty-four. These are both mishivas that are in the area that is soon to be sewed, soon, I think, eighteen months to twenty-four months. They are mishivas that when built...
Where are they located? Where are they located?
One is on, oh, they're in the Oak Street corner.
Okay, it's two separate applications?
They were two separately approved applications.
Okay.
The issue becomes, based upon the fullness of the project, that is, the number of students, and in one case, the number of students who'll be in dorms, they would have required sewerage rather than septic tanks, sanitary source, because the amount of flow would be more than the allowed two thousand gallons. What we're asking the board is to allow us to phase the development with limits to the number of students, and where appropriate, the number of students in dorms, so that for that transitional period, we could get by with the septic, and that will then coincide with when hopefully sanitary source will come in, by which time we will hit our full numbers.
If I understand correctly, phase one will be maximized as much as the health department allows on a septic tank, and then phase two will be the maximum amount that you requested originally?
More succinctly said than I did accurately.
The way, I had an opportunity, because Mr. Auerbach about this today, and the way he described, he said there would be a first story and a second story, he indicated to me that as a safeguard, that the second story would be constructed as a shell, and there would not be sheet rock, that it would not have finished plumbing, it would not have finished electric, et cetera, and it's kind of like if somebody buys a Cape Cod and doesn't finish the second story, you would have to then go approvals, because I talked to him about how we could safeguard that people would not go near music when it was underutilized. So what I think we need to do is have an ironclad resolution that gives very specific details about Mr. Auerbach's, you know, indication, so no C.O. for the second story, it would be separately delineated, no finished plumbing, no finished electric, et cetera, and I will put those in. I think with those safeguards in place, and also based on the pledge of the applicant, that they will not use it until they have full sewer and, or septic or some other ranges, so...
It's not in accordance, Mr. Doyle?
If Mr. Auerbach says it, then you and me know more than I do, but I believe that was accurate, first floor, second floor, and all of this.
What I said, Mr. Auerbach, just coming in, I mentioned to the board, this application, that you had agreed to, an ironclad promise, that the second story would not be finished, or the second phase, he said it was the top floor.
It's the floor.
The floor.
Is that the floor about the school and the door?
Mr. Jackson, should it be affirmed?
Yes, uh, floor. Do you affirm the testimony before the board of the House? None of us do.
I do, uh, hey, that...
So, we had a discussion about the phasing, in order that the first phase would meet the septic capacity, and I indicated our conversation, where you said that you would agree to a not finish, the portion of the building that went over the capacity, so let's identify that, and then we'll put provisions in the resolution that no finished plumbing, no finished electric, no sheet rock, it will be left as a shell, no occupancy, no permits would be issued until such time as you had the floor.
No permits on the second floor?
No, for those finished items, so that it could not be occupied, so let's delineate what portion that would require.
So this is one on Pine Tree, you can see outline of the building, this is on Big North Pine Tree, on the road. And like I said, it's one structure, one structure, and the main street wall generally going to be up, and we'll leave everything else open until we have proper combinations.
But part of it will be used, I mean.
First floor will be filled, could be...
So that's how we can delineate, the first floor will be finished.
And basement.
And the basement. The second story...
It will be framed, it will be blocked, it will not be occupied unless we have proper combinations.
Right, so you won't put in sheet rock, you will not put in finished electric, and then you have to put the rough plumbing in ahead of time.
Whatever's needed, just to get it, as practical as possible, will not be occupied.
So what's the, how can I identify, which number, is that twenty-two forty-one or twenty-one eighty-four?
That was twenty-two forty-one.
So twenty-two forty-one, first floor only, so we'll delineate first floor versus second.
First floor and basement.
First floor and basement.
Basement, okay, and what, the twenty-one eighty-four, how will you?
Seven and twelve, seven and twelve on Avenue, sorry, seven away with seven and twelve on Avenue, as well, again, we're going to be, whatever's practical for us to go ahead and rough now, just makes sense just for sequencing, but as I say, it will not be occupied until we have proper combinations.
So you'll have the basement, and first floor will be occupied?
The first, the first floor basically occupied, the second floor will not be occupied, anything that will exceed that amount of gallons per day, but I think it is, but I'm not trying to debate, it's just, again, part of the construction, it's foolish not to do the masonry walls, or electrical conduits.
I understand that, and I think as long as we have no sheet rock, no finished...
No sheet rock, I'm trying to explain.
There's no way getting a C.O. there.
No sheet rock, no walls.
You can't get a C.O.
I can't, if it's not complying, I'm not getting C.O., correct.
So, but we won't put finished electric, we won't put finished plumbing in, it will all be roughed out.
Finished electric, I'm just trying to, in the way that's holding.
I know very little about buildings, but I know...
All I may have to do for the common space, just for egress, because there's one room upstairs, which has not been used as a dormitory, the common space will have to be finished.
Why?
Because that's an egress, because that upstairs room of classroom, which is not a dormitory, which I have to have just as an egress, for...
We'll look at the plans and all agree on it, Mr. Doyle, and we'll mark it up.
We'll mark it up, I'll make sure, unless I'm mixing it up.
We can mark it up, Chair.
Mark it up, we will comply with it.
He's here first, how about putting in the approval that no C.O.s on the second floor are going to be requested until public surrender.
Fine, that's good.
What is sort of expected, we need to be on that?
Yeah, but you said, you said that you're using one room on the second floor.
He can't get building yards.
Did you say you need one room on the second floor?
So I'll go back to each, I'll go back to look at the exact plans and see if I'm mixing it up, but I think if one room on the second floor is being used, I also have to mark it up to show you.
I think the way, will be subject to Terry going over the plans, making sure that it will not exceed whatever's allowed by...
By outside agency.
By outside agencies, of course, the maximum that's allowed, we're allowed.
And the plan for this is, because one on Pine Tree, within two years, it's going to be through there, on Albert, within a year and a half, two years also, so there's a reason, it's not just, you know...
The only thing I want to make sure of, by not having finishes, like the electric plates can't go on, can't put the actual plates, and I know they have to run the wires.
You cannot get a C.O. on that.
I'll not get a C.O., now, what's now Terry's work, those exact details?
And I'm gonna make sure that it also says no finishes, no permits.
Sorry, this is approved as, with septic, correct?
Correct.
And now you want to start with the waste?
I'm not gonna clarify on, because I know it's been built in phases, but the hell of answer is all, it's one shelf, and to run the corner record, just to clarify that it's not going to be occupied as full capacity until this door is in there, they said, well, how can I do that, because I'm like, I'm running my record and...
Was it required to wait for sewer?
No, no, no. No, it's not.
Because you can only discharge a certain amount, a certain amount of gallons a day into the system.
Right.
So what they're doing is they're phasing up the school buildings, so, but they just want to clarify that by resolution, so they can show the Ocean City Health Department that we've clarified that we're phasing the two buildings, we're not going to exceed what's allowed in the septic system, and when sewer...
And not the sound of...
That's where we're gonna finish the second phase.
Just put the follow on that, I talked to the council, the board of the House, and they were clear about what that meant, whether that the phase would work, what is needed, and the chairman's point is all taken, is that the two thousand gallon limit has to be in the resolution.
Okay, and if I can respectfully request, if you can try to update the resolution tonight, I know I'm asking for a lot, just...
Can't do it tonight.
Can't do it tonight?
Okay. We could do it for the next meeting, but...
Okay, just, they're holding the permit, et cetera, as soon as possible.
Everything else, the sidewalk and parking, everything else will have to be...
Everything's the same, that's what, let's not say the same.
Do I have a question?
If the board said that it'd give us blood, better...
We have to make sure that the resolution is detailed, and make sure that this can't be changed later on. When's our next meeting?
July tenth, and we've already got, you know, resolutions from the last week that we're working on.
So we'll have it for July tenth.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Do we have a motion, go along?
Yeah, I'll move a motion.
Okay, Mr. Plantz, move, Dave, for a second, roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Plantz.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ally, after the number six public hearing, is there any changes to the public agenda?
Uh, yes, there is one listed at the end, they accidentally provided, when the county office sent their notice, they put that the date that the meeting would be, the date that they were sending the notices, so some neighbors got notice in the mail that said there was a meeting last week, I did speak with one or two people at the counter and clarify that they would be re-providing new notice for the next meeting, there are actually going to be seven for July twenty-fourth, and they will be providing a notice, so for anyone in public interest, on November eight, SD twenty-three eighteen, that application is not being heard tonight, they will be providing a notice, most likely for July twenty-fourth.
Okay, thank you.
First, under public hearing, is application SD twenty-two eighty, this is a continuation of the public hearing from our last meeting, in attendance at the last meeting was Mr. Barstil, Mr. Franklin, Mr. Sable, Mr. Hertzel, Mr. Renner, and Mr. Meyer. Mr. Plantz, my disc had had the recording, I'm not sure if you...
I had to listen to the recording, I haven't seen the minutes, I'm gonna check that.
Okay, so Mr. Plantz will not be eligible to vote on this one, but you do have sufficient six members for a forum, aside from Mr. Mr. Plantz.
Okay, hold on.
I believe we had told the public, and had pinned everything except for opposing comments, there was a member of the public who was speaking, who we had kind of brushed along, because we knew the parameters were setting off, we were gonna lose our record of committing that you think...
Was there any opposing there, Tony, in that?
I see there was opposed six hundred and...
The chairman is not in the podium, but I know Mr. and Mrs. Savory, who are here, had some comments to make, and I know that if I might say that they were kind enough to have a conversation with one of the lobbies, they better understand the application, and we better understand the concern for more landscaping, so I think that...
I still prefer to address...
Just one second, I have to run record.
Pam, can you please come forward?
While she's coming forward, I'll just share with the board with some of my notes, where the hall was not going to be rented, the white pine buffer around the parking spaces should be replaced with something more compact, and was not going to be a mini factory that was open to public.
Okay, and ma'am, sort of, what was your name again?
It's Nastel Wider, I-N-A, S-T-A-R-O-D-O-Y-T-O-D.
If you recall, as Ms. Morris pointed out, she was literally at the podium when we ran out of, so I think we should let her continue, maybe update us.
She's on the road.
You're still on the road.
Okay, thank you so much, and because I do not remember widely where I finished, I will address our concern...
Address your comments to the board, we don't get to vote.
Oh, yes, I'm, I'm sorry.
No problem, no problem.
Mr. Chairman, the board, I will start with the...
What's your address?
It's the thirty-eighth Circle Place, we are in the block twelve oh four, lot fifty-six.
Okay.
Yeah, facing...
Can you show us where it is, push to this?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
That's right behind it?
Uh-huh, right behind.
Okay.
And the, and the street we got that?
Right, she's behind the petri.
Power, two of our...
Okay.
This is one, and... And we wouldn't be too worried, but as we know that our.
Speak into the mic. Again, just.
Our area consists mostly of one-story single-family homes. And we purchased our property along Circle Place specifically because it is a dead-end street, said it's quiet, limited in traffic, and set back from the noisy main road known as the Central Avenue, with a hope that we will have a nice quiet place for our future returns. The project as proposed threatens to compromise our quality of life and environment, and requests variances that will bring construction activities in the newly developed schools in a very close proximity to our home and personal space. In particular, we are concerned about the following. Close proximity of construction activities and impervious surfaces and stormwater drainage post-construction to our domestic water well and septic tank. Increased noise from the seventy-plus resident students and vehicular traffic around the new facility. Increased noise from Central Avenue after removal of existing vegetation. Requests that proposed three buffer planting along the eastern side of the project will be mandatory, and maybe a little more of a dis-sulfon, plants that were available for the public. Also, light pollution from multi-story educational, educational building structure, and any outdoor lighting in parking lot and around the building that's supposed to be, but we are very close. Reduction of the rural character of mostly small, single-family homes by aiding the multi-story commercial building and business activity in the middle of this residential area. Also, we have some questions. Does this property have an old septic or well that services an existing home? Remember that they have one home. If an existing well is present on the property, we are concerned that there is no mention of decommissioning the well and redevelopment plans. Otherwise, it can affect our well also. If this project is to move forward, we kindly request that the board not allow any variances in order to allow adequate buffer and setback from the proposed new structure, big areas, stormwater system, and trash collection areas. We are concerned about this big dumpster commercials that's supposed to be right by our property. Which were put in place, no, correction. The project should be, or maybe redesigned, reduce the building footprint and meet existing variances which were put in place to provide safety, comfort, and privacy to the lay-verse resident. We appreciate your time and consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
In that and value to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Glenn. Want to come up with something?
I understand.
What?
Yes. Understood.
She requested, I think, behind the property to have trees that are on the east side of her property.
You mentioned east, she's probably more north side of her property. It's really the south side of her property, not up the.
She said east, but she means by her property. Are there going to be any trees, any vegetation that you're putting in?
We are proposing landscaping along, evergreens along that whole property.
Okay.
So we can, you know. I know changing something, we may end up with more because the.
And your building is not directly in front of her property, is it? Or?
Park lot is one lot away.
The park lot is one lot away.
Actually, two.
Mr. Hertel, do you want any specifications as to the caliber of the trees, or the variety, or the size, or the spacing?
That, we got Terry. And what else is?
Which engine is that, which one, that in that street, not that they. So with them, you have the combination between the street and the function, and you still want the building. You want some.
Vegetation.
Trade. Right in between, so there's no drive-through or walk-through. She mentioned east, I think that's what she meant. East is.
Yeah, you're from, you're from, I'm shocked. Glenn, did she show you where? So you'll put the trees in.
Put the trees in, we can increase them, like what, like hours.
Now, just to clarify.
Mr. Hertel, just the problem is that type of discussion between the applicant's engineer and the witness, none of that's on the record.
I know.
So.
Okay. So I want you to make the record.
I clarified where the dumpster is, so she knows that it's on the other side of the school. And her concern is the height of the building compared to her property and.
Could you just clarify on the record, where you're putting the trees, which is next to her property? It's not the east, just say where it is.
It's on the, it's on the north side of our property, between the non-named street and the, I've got it under feet to her westerly property line. That's the piece where she abuts her property.
And you'll make sure that.
And we're landscaping that whole two hundred foot long property, but. And to help them out, we can increase the trees one size, which will help.
Maybe make it more dense, as opposed to.
Well, we were going to, that was one of the comments we had at the last meeting, was you didn't like the trees, so we were going to go with, instead of white pines, which are kind of airy at times. We're going to go with a different tree that's a little more dense, and we can go over that with Terry to get a proper, you know, proper evergreen there.
And what's you doing, I mean, the northern side of there? Could you, probably someone else woods behind the dumpsters, I'm assuming.
Well, that, yeah, the landscape is going along that whole property.
So whatever density you do. Or do it a little bit.
Right, and that's really, in keeping with your comments from the last meeting, was, what we proposed was going to be too wide, that we would get a more compact tree, so, no, more dense, yes.
Just for the record, she mentioned there's variances, I don't see any variances. Just clarify, are there any variances?
The variance we may have, is to the paper street, where the building is fifty feet from the paper street, but the patio is not. So the patio is about twenty-five feet from the paper street. But the building is fully conforming with the ordinance, where there were no variances, or the building is not.
Okay, and the only other thing that she had, that she spoke about, about your septic, shouldn't be close to her well?
Well, there is.
I mean, that's regulated by the Ocean County Health Department.
Well, no, there's water and sewer in Central Avenue, so we will not add a well and septic. We'll do a record search to see if there was for the existing house. If there is, we have to get permits to.
To remove it.
To remove it, to close it.
Okay, so it will not be used, will not affect our septic.
No.
Anything. Okay.
Will not.
Any questions on board members?
The garbage truck will come and take the dumpster, how are you going to make the turn?
Going to back out all, can you say a pull-in, that it's storage space on the west side, and then back in? Because Public Works now wants compactors rather than dumpsters. So instead of coming, you know, once a week, they think they can, the compactors come once a month.
Mr. Franklin, do you think it will work?
No.
Okay.
It's just looking at it, well.
Okay, no, that's a nice scheme.
You say you'll pull in and turn around back there?
Oh, you did, so we head first, pull into the storage space on the west side, and then back in the dumpsters. Or back into the roll-off. Twenty-four feet wide hall.
The road works twenty-four.
Plus eighteen feet, so it's thirty-sixty feet.
Forty-two.
Forty-two feet, and then there's some space in front of the compactors where they can.
You don't hear a roll-off truck to pick it up, correct?
Correct. Well, we, it was submitted to Public Works, and they, they approved it, so. If they have a problem, we'll go back to, you know, I don't have a problem going back to them, see if they agree that they can get the truck in there, if we have to.
Well, maybe, maybe it's back to dumpster up, you know, to the right.
More, the east comment made from Public Works is to allow it upgrade the whole thirty-yard compactor, the compact for the service, so they can be satisfied.
Yeah, but I mean, that'd be the only thing, if you don't have the rest of room to back in there, pick it up, and then they got to back up and then pull out, maybe you have to back the dumpster up a little.
Well, it's in that gray shade there.
Yeah, I know, but I see, you may have to.
We can.
That would be the worst scenario.
Yes. We have room, we could push it back. Well, technically, I think it's a valid concern. We'll go through it one more time with Public Works, because this was a new requirement of them just in the past few months, so. We'll make sure that before we build it, we've worked out all the cakes.
Right.
The mayor's on twelve oh four lot fifty, was here last week. And they were concerned about kids playing on the sidewalk and cars zooming in and out of that property. So can we suggest a speed bump in that parking lot?
What would they? There's a stop sign in the sidewalk adjacent to Central Avenue. I don't think driving in Central Avenue, knowing the traffic, nobody's going to be speeding out of that driveway. They're going to have to stop to see what's coming.
It's a long strip, a long stretch of parking, people rushing.
Where do you want a speed bump on Central?
No, in the parking lot. So if I put a speed bump halfway back to parking lot. It doesn't, it doesn't. Her concern was, her concern was the sidewalk out on Central Avenue. Somebody was trying to choose a.
People trying to catch that, between two cars, make a left turn onto Central Avenue.
Once they stop, it doesn't matter. The speed bump.
It's just another way of safety, because people don't stop always on the stop sign.
We can, if the board requires it. I'm not a speed bump fan, because I don't think, I don't think when there's a stop sign up here, a speed bump anywhere other than right at the driveway is going to help, and then there's self-mind.
Whoever doesn't stop by stop sign will stop for a speed bump, doesn't want to break his car.
Forcefully.
Okay.
And in these terms of striding in between the parking lot, for possessions to cross, it's a long parking lot.
Maybe the sidewalk on the iron, east side of the parking.
And people parking on the other side.
And then just, like you do in the stuff you said.
What about, or what in between, is striding at least, some sort of safety?
What between the parked cars?
Like you, right in between the handicuffs or what?
Are there any striking down by hand?
Going across the driveway. That if it's a little bit difficult, I think that'll help. And the same thing at the entrance of the parking lot. But it's striding across, kids going with bikes down the road, down Central Avenue.
We can do that. Thank you. Absolutely.
Anybody else in public would like to be heard on this application, please come forward. See, mom, or, yes, who calls it the public.
Just regarding lot fifty again, I'm just trying to remember if, with her concerns, would it help as well if maybe it was a little more dense in the front? As well the, the trees?
Mr. Franklin?
Yeah.
Well, there's an existing, they have an existing six-foot fence on their property.
They do.
And we're proposing, and on our property, it's their best.
Oh, there is a plan to.
Existing, yes.
I have two more comments. Write in, write out, can you suggest that? We discussed it last time, we didn't find one.
We're at the mercy of, of the Ocean County.
You're not at the mercy of the Ocean County, because we.
Well, no, we need their approval.
Yeah, you need their approval, but we want.
This, this Jackson Height discussed with the board determining another municipality. We could get whipsawed if you say it has to be this way, and the county says it has to be our way, then this permitted use with structure that we use no variances is quite minimal. And we just, we appreciate the write-in and write-out only.
Yeah, but that probably could come on the correspondence. Back to the board and say the county didn't agree. I have never seen that, I don't know why the county will say they want a left out also.
We could ask Mr. Vogel, I mean, is it in your sense that the county would override the municipality's desire to have write-in and write-out only? Of, you know, for safety and operation of the site?
I can't say highly of that, but generally not.
Okay.
Yeah, generally they'll abide, unless they have a good reason, in case we follow county recommendation, but they may.
I have no problem following it, they supersede us, I've no problem.
We recommend that. Scenario, chairman, counties may have a plan, and I'm talking, I defend. They may be looking at this and saying, you know what, we're going to have a wide Central Avenue along the frontage, and that's going to allow you to take different tracks. We don't know.
Okay.
That Baker Street has a sidewalk coming across, do you remember? Not even, the Baker, that Baker Street, Baker Street.
It doesn't have any, but it's shown on the plan, and it's, it is sidewalk, so. If you don't believe it, that's.
It's not somebody that they care about, we're inside of the books.
It's there already, the county can decide what.
Mr. Jackson, can we make a.
Chairman, if I can interrupt, we actually just received comments from Ocean County Engineer today.
Okay.
I don't believe the board has this.
I don't believe Mr. lines.
It's kind of, no, I'm sorry.
Run, roll, please.
Hold on, I'm sorry, Mr. Lyons has obviously forwarded this to me today, let me confirm the blocking line. Yeah, Mr. Lyons has obviously forwarded this to me today.
One of the comments.
That was the east wing.
Yeah. That was the bad part, Mr. Lyons. Anyway, addressing the following comments. Revised the driveway geometry to either A, provide a right turn in from through travel lane without conflict with any access drive with the existing vehicle, or provide a right turn in from the shoulder without conflict within the access drive to the exiting vehicle, that's part of it. And then part B, demonstrate how the design vehicle can reverse direction without backing onto Central Avenue and seeing the downed traffic, etc.
So was that impact on the write-out?
That's a good question.
And it sounds like they want to let the traffic turn in off of the shoulder, they want to make sure they move in safe. It doesn't seem like they have any great desires as far as being able to make a left turn in there.
It, it doesn't sound.
Doesn't sound. I think that, that's what the board wants.
So the condition is no left turn out, and if they run into problems with the county, we'll put it on correspondence and we'll address it.
So I ask for motion on this application?
Uh.
Yes.
Be closed to the public?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Stable moves, and then Dave Garfield seconds. Okay, we do, on all the conditions that we've talked about.
Strike, go left, left turn.
Right turn only.
I will take it.
And the trees. And the trees should be more dense by the neighboring property. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Roll, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Stable.
Yes.
Mr. Plant. Sorry, we stepped down, Mr. Hertel.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Yes.
Have anybody seen Mr. Plant? Can you come back in for the next one, go out with Matt?
I'm stepping down.
Okay, Mr. Renner, stepping down for the next.
You're stepping down, too? No, no.
We are considering S D twenty-two sixteen, Go Far Great, Mr. Plant has stepped.
Okay, don't bite me. Okay, one second, we have a call. Uh, one second.
We do.
Uh, no, we don't. We're stepping down. Okay, I'm sorry, okay. Well, then, then go ahead.
Um, this is, this is what we consider a minor.
Please take conversations outside, you cannot hear me.
This is two lots into three, which in normal circumstances would be considered a minor subdivision. However, because these lots were more recently created, it's a major subdivision by a C major. Low pay notes to Red Beat Way, application to Go Far Great LLC, and I said it in two lots into three lots.
Terry, would you like to go through the report?
Sure. Um, under section one, chairman.
Um, under section one, Chairman, bottom page two and page three, we have a number of sufficient waivers. Without going through those, for purpose of this application, we support the waiver sets depending on which areas or figures to address under the power and surrounding states' major subdivision.
So you, you agree with all the waivers? All the waivers? We have a motion to go along with it? The plans are moved, second?
Second.
So, tomorrow second, all in favor? Okay.
All right, our zoning comment one deals with some of the lines within the R forty zoning standards without reading or perempting. I'm sure Brian is gonna address that in testimony. We have lot area barriers that are required for two of the lots. We have primary setback for the safety lots. I believe that's all the zoning we leave. There's a design waiver as well for a non-racial side lot lot.
Okay. That's it? Okay, thank you.
So this is Mr. Chairman, I would interrupt the applicant, Mike Flannery here again, this is a sworn witness on this one. Is right from testimony, did you report for registered authority?
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer, professional planner. This was a property that was subdivided to create the cul-de-sac years ago as a cluster type of subdivision. Based on the ordinance, we need to comply with R twenty bulk requirements. We're, we take two lots that are oversized for this development, oversized based on the R twenty bulk requirement, and we're proposing to subdivide it into three lots. Uh, three exhibits, eight one is the map, which was submitted, eight two is the map showing the initial subdivision, and eight three is the attached map. The orange is the property with the property line down the middle. We're proposing to subdivide it into a twenty-four thousand square foot lot along Break Road, which will be a conforming lot, nobody's needed. A sixteen thousand square foot lot, a sixteen thousand six hundred sixty-seven square foot lot along Surrounding Way. And we had to answer a twenty-five foot front setback there, consistent with the setback relief that was granted because it's narrow in that area. Uh, the area behind it is the Crystal Lake Preserve, so, uh, it's, it's, there isn't much area to go back and to the nice house. The original approval, we got that, we were requesting the same relief. With respect to the lot sizes, on eight two, I marked in blue all the lots which are virtually fifteen thousand square foot lots at the time of the application, as the board said, fifteen thousand is the smallest gonna go. So all the remaining lots, the rest of them are fifteen thousand. In green are the ones that are between twenty thousand and, and fifteen thousand. So seventy-five percent of the lots are less than twenty thousand. And what we're trying to show is, is that we're looking for the norm of the neighborhood. And, and these lots at sixteen, sixteen seven certainly fit in with, with the norm of the neighborhood. Um, going to Terry's report. He indicates pretty much what, what I've laid out. Uh, he, he indicates the two variances which we've discussed. The minimal lot area for sixteen thousand and the sixteen thousand six hundred sixty-seven square foot lot, and the two twenty-five foot front setback variances. Those are C two variances. Uh, and the, you know, the justification for the variances, we go to the master plan of two thousand and seventeen. Uh, and on page two, under the background information, it goes all to the growth. Page three, it says, therefore, it's important to plan for the residential development to house the growing population. Uh, the vision statement on page seven indicates encourage growth and development in appropriate locations and consistent with established land uses. And this certainly is consistent with the established land uses. These are gonna be custom homes, beautiful lots that full cul-de-sac, uh, it is, is developing appropriately with the, with the area. The other thing I should point out, in most places in Lakewood where we have those bigger lots, it's because there's no sewer. There is public sewer. This applicant brought the public sewer, improved Drake Road with urban sidewalk. Really made this a, a nice development with a stormwater management facility in fact. And this just provides one additional house on this cul-de-sac, consistent with the other houses. The municipal land use law, under purpose of the act, encourages this collection to guide the appropriate use of development of lands in the state in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And it's my testimony that, that this does that, and to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to well-being, neighborhoods, communities, regions, and preservation of the environment. And, and, and it's my testimony that, that that does this. The two thousand and seventeen master plan that was done said this area should be an R twelve, which would be twelve thousand square foot lots. We don't wanna build twelve thousand square foot lots where you can get four, we wanna build three beautiful lots for families that don't fit in with the character of that neighborhood. And in order to do that, we need the relief. And for C two variances, we have to show you that it relates to a specific piece of property. And I think when you look at how this property lays out, how the cul-de-sac looks out, it clearly does that. The purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced, and, and that's what I just read you. Variances can be granted without any substantial detriment to the public good. Clearly, these lots fit in with the other lots, there is no detriment. Uh, the benefits outweigh the detriment, these lots will provide impact fees to help fix roads, uh, and, and they'll provide housing opportunities. And then we have to show that it will not impair the intent purpose of the zoning plan and zoning order. And as I indicated, these lots are actually larger than what the master planner...
Is it a part of the original subdivision?
The original subdivision chopped this into two lots, uh, two big lots. Uh, and, and the lots that are in the area, uh, they have the Crystal Lake Preserve here, and they have one, uh, property owner next door, my, my old neighbor. Uh, and the applicant has that with the neighbor, the neighbor is very happy with the buffer they were providing. The neighbor is happy that it's gonna be three nice lots rather than waiting for the master plan to have four. So the neighbor got notice, told the applicant she's, she's very happy with this, she's feeling a little impacted by it. Uh, and certainly if, if she wasn't happy with it at, at the public hearing, she'll get up and express her opinion. Looking at the other comments in Terry's report, um, there's a comment about parking, and certainly there'll be plot plans and we'll comply with whatever parking's needed. We're not asking for any relief. Uh, the stormwater management, he's indicating we should do dry wells for the roof runoff, and, and certainly we would do that at the time that we present plot plans, as well as the grading, and, and we would comply with all the other comments in Terry's report.
Thank you. Any questions, any more lenders?
Drake Road has sidewalk now, on that part? Did the sidewalk be put in here? On Drake Road?
On Drake? But this, this applicant would put Drake, put the sidewalk here, and, and, and the applicant will in with the condition of sidewalk along the other lot that is non-eligible.
Any other questions, any board lenders? Seeing none, we'll close it to the public. Uh, disabled?
Sorry, what happened if you do bring in that property five feet more, so that's twenty-five feet, make it equal thirty feet?
Well, we can push it back, it makes, it makes narrow houses. And, and for this type of lot, I think the, the larger houses would fit in better, and I think the neighborhood would benefit from having larger houses. On that kind of avenue, I don't think you're gonna notice whether it's twenty-five feet or thirty foot setback. And it wouldn't be the whole, the whole way anyway, because you can see it's a very, very wide lot. There'd be one part of the house that, that may be within twenty-five feet. The majority of the house is certainly gonna be further back from that.
This is not funny, it's upsetting. Uh, we love that to the public, anybody from the public would like to be heard on this application, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close it to the public. Uh, today, a motion on this application. Mr. Meyer moves, and then...
Second.
Mr. Garfield, second, roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Berthel.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Next application is SC twenty-two eight, the war made by Hal Stickle. It's a preliminary final plan for addition from existing warehouse at nineteen ninety-one Russell University Boulevard. These applicants waited to do that, only for the end of the last meeting.
One second. Terry, your wife's going to the report?
Um, there's a third page, or maybe one third letter, there's initial waivers. Um, we have a number listed. Traffic study as well as total conference speakers, four feet, EIS and SAK plan. Uh, we support the traffic waiver request because of the smaller increase in traffic. Uh, we also support the three feet side waivers since we have enough information on the time. Uh, support the EIS waiver, since the proposed improvements, what we've adopted on the developed area of property. Uh, and finally, we would like things like, from the applicant, as July, there is no landscaping plan, but we're okay with it for the current purposes.
We have a motion to go along with the, the decision. Mr. Sable moves. Tomorrow second. Uh, all in favor? Okay, onto zoning.
Okay, um, looking at the zoning section of our letter. Uh, we believe that there is no hardwood variance requirement since the wood is a two thousand one hundred foot primary setback line. The system plan your setback, at the time, was on two feet. It quickly reduced to fifty feet of approval by the municipal commission, which has greater approval. There are any side or setback areas, uh, believing they are being varied for the existing street. Jan, I believe that's all we need.
That, that's correct, Jan Waters appearing on behalf of the applicant. Um, yes, in addition to the, the front yard setback, there's a non-conforming side yard. Currently, it's twenty-nine point four feet, where setback is thirty foot.
Right, might add one ten, Chairman, I'm sorry. Um, under design waivers with section three of the report, we have less than seven of all the side frontage, shade creating buildings, as well as street names.
And, and the other...
Uh, that, that's the list of waivers we mentioned last night.
You know, we spent a lot of time, we started talking about the sidewalks at the time, and it wasn't worth it. So it's worth it to have, to have this. Pay attention to that.
This is an industrial park, right?
We just had lot two, you do run some.
Is the, is the, is the applicant the owner of this building here?
The answer is yes, through an, an alternate entity.
I'm just, I'm just curious to know what the owner of this building thinks of sidewalks in the industrial park in general. Are they for them, are they against them, do they have opinion, do they...
I don't think they have an opinion.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just wondering, because I know the industrial commission, I know that, I know that many property owners within the industrial park have, have asked that no sidewalks be involved in the industrial parks. I'm just curious to know what this owner thinks.
Well, the, the current owner of the property is actually, through the, it's the operator, they've been in the building since it was built fifteen years ago. So they're used to being there for fifteen years without sidewalks, I think. They probably, if, if asked whether they prefer sidewalks or not, would say no. Just because they've owned it fifteen years and not seen a need for the sidewalk.
And any schools in the neighborhood?
I don't...
That's what it boils down to.
Yeah, I, I understand.
In industrial parks, there's so much schools today.
Yeah.
And not to have sidewalks where there are schools at the park. I mean, industrial commission, I think, will divide it, we should give the sidewalks, as far as I know.
We just had an advocate who asked to leave, you know, and we were quiet.
Yes, Oroskai Jakob is right next door. I, I assume maybe you recognize my name, I was a firewood, it's been a couple of years ago. Um, that looks like it, right near me there.
I think Laker came along, it's not like, what, it was thirty years ago, I think it was sidewalks. Okay, you're okay.
I understand.
Okay. Um, okay, you wanna...
Well, the...
Mr. Markel wants to reconvene.
Okay, yeah. Just wonder what kind of goods to handle there?
Uh, Hal Sickle is a family-owned business, and they're involved in the supply of packaging supplies, uh, equipment, janitorial, and material handling products. They don't manufacture anything there, it's brought in and then distributed out.
Do you wanna affirm, do you have any witnesses?
Well, let me get back to sort of through your offer.
Yeah.
Um, there's one other additional variance, and that is the site identification sign setback, which is currently four foot, and there's, the zone requires a fifteen foot setback. This is an existing sign. So is, we're gonna vote positive waivers first, or...
Only the submission waiver, which definitely takes a action.
Okay, all right. Um, just by way of overview, Hal Sickle is in the, uh, packaging supply business. They've been at this property for fifteen years, that's when the building was first built. Um, the, the variances that we're asking for are because that's how the building was constructed originally. Um, what they're, the property's located in the M one zone, they're, they're proposing a sixteen thousand square foot addition to an existing facility. Engineer, I hope we'll, we'll describe in better detail. But what they're actually doing is just additional warehouse space, they're putting it in the parking lot. They're taking part of the parking lot in the back and they're putting the building up on it. So in response to the question about landscaping, there is no, there is no change in the landscaping, they're covering current impervious, impervious surface. There's mature landscaping, mature trees on the property, are you losing parking? Not, not appreciably, for, for the use there, no.
Are you asking if any variance is...
No. No variance for parking, there's gonna be no increase in vehicular traffic, both truck and automobile. Uh, they just need more warehouse space. So with that, I'd like to call now Dr. Schwanker, who's with Lindstrom, he's in a car.
Good evening, everyone.
Would you raise your right hand, do you score a firm testimony, you'll give your word of service, you took the whole drink and nothing but food?
Yes, I do.
Um, Ms. Ward, could you please briefly qualify your witness?
Yes, I don't think you have a... You weren't hands, Ward, either.
Uh, I, there was a couple of you, yes. Uh, but I am a licensed professional engineer, have been since two thousand and four. I provide a testimony throughout various zoning boards and many boards throughout the state of New Jersey. I also served as C five park zoning board and testimony here for four years, from two thousand and nine to two thousand and twelve.
Okay, one second, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I agree with everything that you sort of wanted to describe as far as the existing building, the existing non-conforming variances, and the fact that the applicant was hoping to sixteen thousand square foot building in the rear of this existing building. And the important thing is, is to note is that addition is going over what is currently all a paid area. And exactly, actually, we're removing some, along with the back of the previous building, so really, we're, we're reducing that in various ways on the site. Therefore, we're not impacting the stormwater management, not changing any, maybe the pattern. It's a good thing. And again, we're not asserting any discombating on the site, it's currently a paid area. Um, as far as the improvements that are being proposed, forty addition, locating the, um, the base from the back of the existing building to the side proposed, as well as adding, uh, the drive access and two days along the existing building simply because during construction, they'll still need to have, you know, trucks coming to bring their deliverables. Um, there is length proposed, and length intended for there to package. And as far as the existing, the designing waivers that were proposed, were referenced, for the shady tree and the easement and the sidewalk, is simply because we're not asserting any protection on the side. And there currently is a lot of trees there and some trees along the front.
You're not renting out the warehouses?
No. No.
It's strictly the operator.
This is strictly because they're a very successful business in the Laker industrial park, expanding and they want to stay and continue to grow.
And the parking requirements, it says there's 60 spaces, that's after you build your building, there'll still be left at 60 spaces.
That's correct.
And you only need 46.
Yeah.
That's right. Simply adding, adding some trees, um, starting here and already a paved area.
This will not be adding any personnel. Uh, this will not be adding any additional truck traffic, uh, it's just, they have to be for additional warehouse.
Is there anything in the report that you not agree with?
There, there's nothing in the report that the applicant takes issue with, uh, it's usually.
Want to point to the recommendation? The report does say that you may add personnel, so just ask the.
Might what?
The traffic report, um, traffic study says that you may add 14 personnel or something like that.
It's not 14, or, uh, we did.
I just don't want it to be a contradiction.
Understood. Uh, the traffic report we prepared is based on addition of those 14 parking spaces that were, were proposing. Not simply because of the need, but because of the presence of spaces available.
Interesting.
If according to the handbook of traffic reports, that's what you would add. However, if need be, I have the applicant here who testified that they're not adding any personnel, nor will they need to over the long haul for this additional warehouse space.
Thank you. Any questions, any board numbers?
We require a sidewalk, that would be an issue with the signs, but.
If it's four feet, you're ahead.
Yeah, if, yeah, the sidewalk has to go in, then obviously the sign will have to be moved.
If there's a gap, the applicant can try and.
Right.
So you'll still ask for, uh, variance, you're not moving it back 50 feet, you're maybe moving back a foot or two.
Well.
I think you.
The variance is.
If you, if you need it, then ask for the variance.
Yeah, and there just be sign, and until the sidewalk is installed, it, it needs to have legitimacy. Uh, if we have to install a sidewalk, then we would move the sign back a reasonable, you know, length, obviously, if I could be right, that's the sidewalk.
I'm not sure exactly if, if sidewalks were to be installed on, maybe a couple of feet off of the existing curve, um, I mean, it would be close to that, I'm not sure.
Thank you, I will open to the public now. Anybody from the public would like to be heard on this application? Steve Nolan, I would close to the public, I would entertain a motion on this application. What? Okay, followable. Uh, Mr. Garfield.
Yeah.
What, what do you feel about sidewalks?
I like it.
You like it? Mr. Franklin.
No, you agree.
You agree?
Yeah.
Mr. Sebel?
I think it's inevitable, so we should start it soon.
Okay, Mr. Blaster?
I'm not. Maybe you're not. I don't say it, but, uh, I, I don't need to go against the board, you know, I don't like going, but, uh, I just, I just know from the industrial commission that they, they have to do most.
Okay, I, I think I'll tell they come back and say they don't want it, but I, I'm not going against the board. Okay.
So I think basically, what do you think?
Both sides.
You want to say yours?
My vote is you can't take one.
Why? Yes, it's a question, you're the person telling the question.
At least anyone.
What, what, what the government body asked us to put in the public? I, I, I'm mixed on it, but the government body.
Okay, so.
Mr. Sebel, we want to.
Oh, yes.
Any other?
I'll second.
Please, Mr. Sebel moves, Mr. Franklin seconds, roll call please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Flankum.
Yes.
Mr. Hertzler.
Yes.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You'll be out of here in half an hour.
Thank you, Jim. Next application is SP 2244 for Callmay Orheim, this is a renewed application, we do have a radiating plan in front of the court consideration.
Hey, Terry, do you want to throw in the report, please?
I don't think Terry's done a new review.
Yeah, if I, maybe I can address it, uh.
Mr. Pepper, if you will walk me through it, this is a pretty big question about that perhaps the changes that has been taken in additional variances.
One second, that was, were doing the trailer? No, no trailer. Okay, no problem, I'd like to give the.
No, I understand, I understand. Uh, first, before, before I start.
Just identify yourself for the record.
Sorry, Adam Fattner, the applicant.
Who you?
Um, you know, it's been a long week, and.
Thank you, thank you, Tom.
I follow from many legacies.
Want to drink a water?
Many of which that, you know, I didn't know about. But one of them, and he fought very hard, for, you know, there were many people before, a lot of you were even in town, um, were in our houses of worship. In the mid, to late night, mid to late eighties and early nineties, uh, these type of applications were not even committed in the zone. When I looked at my calendar, I was pushing everything off, and I saw on my calendar that I had a application for a house of worship this evening, along with other ones, and I was originally going to just push everything off. So when I saw there was a house of worship on, I could not let myself follow it out. And delayed the application. I found love in what he did. And he worked what was right for the community. With that said, I'll proceed, and I apologize, I just, I don't know. It all comes out. This application I previously did before the board, um, had been approved during resolution compliance, uh, air was raised, uh, that we missed, uh, due to the architecturals. When they were, the final architecture was submitted, there were a couple of items that we had missed. Um, there was a second floor landing, exterior stairs, uh, a canopy approaching to the side yard setback. Originally, there were no, there, there was no variance requested, as we don't need one. Um, but now, if you look at the plans, uh, if you're looking at them, it's the right of the building, there's a staircase and a landing, um, that we now approach in the side yard setback. Uh, we're 5.6 feet where 10 feet is required. Um, the second variance that we're asking for, uh, is on the, the front steps. Uh, originally, the, there's 30 foot required, we had asked for 13.2 feet, but again, it's really, if you look at the front of the building, it's just the stairs that approach into the, into the setback. Uh, and we're now, uh, I believe it was 5.6 feet, um, uh, the variance that we're asking for. Everything else, uh, is the same, there's really no change, um, like I said, it's really just a side staircase with a landing, um, on the side of the buildings. Uh, we had noticed for both of these variances, um, let's see, I don't have my engineer here, and I still apparently don't do the engineering as well, but that, that is everything in all the plans were submitted to the board.
Do you, oh, do you know what it was to the side of the building with this?
Uh.
What is to the?
Looks like a residential area.
Residential house, it's a residential. It's a residential house, and, okay, this was noticed before.
Noticed today again?
I noticed this.
You noticed it?
Yes, I noticed this, and this is true that everyone down, that there's existing, let me back up, we originally came in, there was an existing shul there today. We then had an approval for, for an applicant, for a, for a addition. They were then able to acquire additional property, we came back before the board, and we're not, oh, removing the building, they're doing a brand-new shul to better utilize, utilize the property. Um, at that point, the plans is, I guess, had not been, the, our final architecture's not been, uh, it didn't reflect it, or we missed it, uh, that we needed the side yard setback, and then just built the front landing for this ass. Nothing is changing from, from the original application.
Not making the building any.
It's the same, same square foot, didn't change literally a thing.
I assume the neighbors are okay.
Yeah, you know, all the neighbors got, uh.
That's why I asked you, you know.
Yes, yes, we did notice, yeah.
I'm a little bit of a muddle, so.
Yes, yeah.
Any board members have any questions on this application?
Mr. Barker, one question, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Looking at your diagram.
Yes.
And judging, like, we started, how many people just expected to use this facility?
How many families are, are in our vision?
About 70 families.
They're looking at the entrance, and when they all leave, it's going to be an awful crowded area in front, or they're going to be on the street.
Uh, we still have, it's not much of a setback. Sure. We still have, I believe it's five, well, it's 13.2 feet, uh, was what we originally asked for. That actually doesn't seem, the only difference is now the steps just come out a little, correct.
Interrupting the process.
Uh, it fronts on Adams Street, which, as the board members are aware, is not a heavily trafficked street, especially, um, during, uh, the Sabbath and holidays, um.
Would be hard, the whole town on that street had a heavy traffic.
Yeah.
The street is being approved. The town has plans to approve the whole street.
Okay. Okay, I will open it to the public, anybody from the public would like to be heard on this application, please come forward. Getting up? No, you give up? Okay, I would entertain a motion on this application.
I'll make a motion for first.
Okay, second. Mr. Nolan moves, Mr. Franklin, seconds, roll call please.
Mr. Garfield.
No.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yes.
Mr. Flankum.
Yes.
Mr. Hertzler.
Yes.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm sorry.
No problem, and, uh, I wish you luck. Okay, Adam, if you're walking in, could you call Mrs. Weinstein to come in?
Mr. Pepper, you had mentioned your engineer wasn't here, was it Mr. Kishuba, you were waiting on by any chance on this one?
Yeah.
Mr. Kishuba has the next application, I'm not sure that he's here yet, but he did say that, um, if we reached it and he hadn't arrived yet, he had another meeting to be at, that we should take the following application, which is Orihuta.
Yeah, that's what I want to see, I don't see Mrs. Weinstein here.
You find her in the background, right?
No. Mrs. Weinstein's here.
Oh, yeah, Maryam, Joe's not here, we'll take Orihuta.
You're taking Orihuta on my dinner, so.
Actually, take her to the.
I told you separate, I'm coming to do the.
Take her to the.
Beautiful day.
Unless the board wants to take a 10-minute recess because.
Mrs. Weinstein, are you ready?
The chairman, I had advice for you to, to form the application on tonight, but they would be reached at value, not anticipating a large crowd.
Well, we told them so.
No, we thought it would be helpful to not have the mall here, not be like everything else.
He's just been watching you on the TV.
But of course, the legal notice says reference is 6:00.
Okay, I, I don't mind taking a 5-minute recess.
Take a 5-minute recess.
But I, I have to stop, because if, if, we continue, we go to number seven, I'm going to.
No, 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 take a 5-minute recess and then we'll start, then it don't.
Yeah, I don't think you're going to.
Yeah, we're definitely be here in 5 minutes.
Nothing. Nobody's application would hear about it.
What?
Either number five or seven, we're ready to go.
Okay, so, uh, let's just move forward, Mrs. Weinstein. They want to.
Go on, Brennan.
Yep, you have your engineer here?
For the record, I'm set down for this application.
Thank you, Mr. Flankum has set down your going-to-take application, SP 2289 for Yeshiva Orihuta. The major site plan for his school located on Franklin Boulevard.
Okay, hold on one second, please. Just find the application. Okay, uh, Terry, you have a report on this application, okay? As soon as you're ready.
The board should have from the June 13th, going to, um, page three, other submission waivers. You have COFO and contours, manner features with the 200 feet as well as the EIS. Uh, we support the B waivers, 2, 4, and 10, since the character is on blast it up. Uh, and then under the C13 EIS, we support the waiver, uh, since the B package showed nothing automatically sensitive, mapped on the property. Uh, and we also have the trade protection match with plan at play.
Do I have a motion along with the recommendation, engineer? Mr. Sebel, please.
All right, and thank you, moving on, chairman, second.
All in favor?
All in.
Okay. The waivers.
Uh, continuing on, uh, under zoning section two, um, we believe the rear yard setback variance is required. Um, the plans show, uh, a setback to 28.73 feet versus the 30 feet minimum. Um, similarly, uh, we're not sure about the height, we'll have testimony as to what the building had used that, uh, CEO. Uh, and if necessary, um, the board will have to whack with the height variance. Um, north east side of the site, uh, the building is 15 feet for lot one. Um, I think this per page do the, uh, 24th perimeter, uh, perimeter buffer requirement, uh, and they are proposing fencing. I'm sure we'll have testimony at short loop, uh, and also a duty to be required because we have parking facilities that look at 5 feet of the, of the property line. Uh, we have no setbacks for, uh, if it was identified on the property, uh, we'll have to testify on that.
Thank you. Terry, you said the case people is a high value.
We ask for testimony to interpret.
Well, yes.
And Mrs. Weinstein.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Um, some of those are actually changing as a result of certainly some discussions that we've had with the neighbors. Um, Maryam Mortson, on behalf of the applicant, Yeshiva Orihuta, then, and I do point out that there definitely will be parents coming in, and there was, there, there will be an audience, they really were told to come at 7:45. Um, this application, as you know, is for major site plan approval for a boys' elementary school. That calls for development of the yeshiva in two phases. Phase one will consist of the building as shown on the plans, as the phase one proposed two-story building, as well as all of the paving of the sidewalks and the parking areas. Phase two will consist of the phase two addition to the building as noted on the plans. The pool and the seven parking spaces that are shown behind lot 18 are being removed, such as to preserve a 20-foot buffer at the request of the owner of lot 21. We actually do have a revised plan, I don't know if the board wants it because it's only installed today with the neighbor. Pool is being removed, and that parking area with the seven parking spaces is also being removed. So the relief that was requested for the, that was pointed out for the five parking spaces within the buffer area that we no longer need because we're taking out those parking spaces. Um, anything with reference to the pool is coming out because we're removing the pool.
Are you creating any parking variances by getting rid of?
We'll get there, we'll get there, hold on. Um, but before we get to that, because I just, I did promise the neighbors to put everything on the record, we will also be providing an eight-foot white vinyl fence on the side that backs up to lot 21. Again, this was as the, this was as per the request of the owner of lot 21, who has a tennis court and a pool, um, on the other side of that area. We will supplement the parking with four additional parking spaces in the main parking area, such that there will be 59 parking spaces, whereas Terry's letter states that 58 parking spaces are required. So, Mr. Chairman, to answer your question, no, we will not require relief from parking, we're just going to move it over to the main area. I also want to note that the requirement of 58 parking spaces is after the full build-out, which includes phase two, so surely when we do phase one, we do not need it. The intent here is that the applicant is going to acquire hopefully lot 18, although we don't know who the owner of that property is at this point, since there's no name on it. Um, and hopefully at some point, um, we'll be, we will be back probably for an approval of a pool, um, and some, and, and potentially some additional parking spaces.
18-point company, they're still a half.
There's what, there's, there's, there's a lot that's, that's like a, there's a 5,000 square foot lot that's.
It doesn't belong there, it's not on your property.
It, it, well, it's a 5,000 square foot lot in the R40 zone, so it definitely doesn't belong there, but, uh.
You're surrounding more cars.
Correct, so I suspect that by the time we build the school, the owner will. I don't know, but, uh, yes. The total number of students proposed at the end of the build-out of phase two is 400 students. There are currently five buses planned for phase one, but the site can handle up to 12 buses, and we will provide testimony on the bus situation. As far as drop-off and pickup times, they're staggered, as in any boys' elementary school, with the upper grades coming in for morning prayer services at about 7:40 in the morning, and the primary through fifth coming in at 9:00 a.m. Most students are bussed, other than the occasional boy who misses the bus or has a doctor's appointment. Um, the dismissal times are staggered, 3:00 p.m. dismissal for primary, 4:00 p.m. dismissal for grades one through four, and 4:45 dismissal for grades five through eight. There are two variances being requested, as well as upper relief for the other sides, other than the side that abuts lot 21, which we are not. other than the side that abuts lot twenty-one, which we are not requesting buffer relief and we'll certainly, we'll be keeping the trees in there, in there, we will be keeping the, 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 whatever is there in its current state. We are requesting a height variance to thirty-eight point five feet due to the design of the property. That's less than, that's less than ten percent, that is ten percent above. I don't actually think it's going to be a full thirty-eight point five, but just to be on the safe side, the variance should be for the thirty-eight point five feet. And then we are also requesting a rear yard setback, which is for the phase two addition, which is for a little over a foot off of the required thirty-foot setback and, and, well, we'll, we'll let Glenn give the testimony. But, but just, in a nutshell, the reason for that is because it makes the, the shul area work better. That's why we need that extra foot, because I certainly asked, why, why are we asking for a variance for one foot?
I think that's the minuses.
What?
The minuses, no?
It is the minimus. It is the minimus, but I still think you can ask me why we're asking for a variance. So that's what I'm telling you. The architect says it lays out the shul a whole lot better. At this point, John, if I could ask that one?
Why, just wear it from test one and give it for a four, which is the whole street and up.
I do, glad line. Professional engineer, professional planner, liquid interest.
Okay, let's proceed.
As Mary made indicated, we're, it's a boys' school. It's on Franklin Boulevard, which is the extension of James Street. So access in and out of the site onto Cross Street is at that signalized intersection. We are providing, as Mary indicated, parking ordinance, buffering along lot twenty-one. We've spoken to the owners of the adjacent lots, and they, they had no objection to our waiver requesting for buffering on the rear and sides. We are providing fencing. The lots are very large out there, so they all have, you know, fifteen, twenty, thirty feet of trees on their side of the property line. So we haven't had anybody contacted to object to that. Basically trucks, buses will be in the north lane driveway. The parking being the primary control button. And on the south, on the other driveway, there's a wet standard and a back-up to, uh, uh, Cross Street. Two variances. We, we've been adjusting the grading. The reason why we're asking for the variance, we've adjusted the grading based on the design of this, this school. I'm right at like thirty-nine point nine feet, but if I have to change any of the grading...
Let me stop you right there. We can only go to thirty-eight point four nine.
I'm sorry. No, I, you're correct.
Okay.
So, so it's, we're requesting that three and a half additional feet. Above the thirty. Has to be, sorry, thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight point four in the...
I... Hold on. This board cannot give a D variance, so the Oklahoma law, we lose our jurisdiction, so...
I, I'm sorry. I, I mixed my numbers though. I'm, I've got the building right now at thirty-four point nine feet, which is point one foot below the, you know, the maximum. Right.
I'm going to put in the resolution, a height variance is granted to allow at a height of thirty-eight point four nine, so you've got to stay below that.
That's fine.
If you come in at thirty-two feet or thirty-one feet or eighteen feet, that's fine.
That's, that's fine. That's exactly what I meant. It's just the grading is, it's, the property slopes. I'm having trouble getting the right, the right grading on the property. So it's a small amount.
It's municipal land use law. Under the, 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 the D variances, there's six enumerated D variances.
So we can't get ever a building height variance?
A D variance would be considered a use variance, that the use of the information itself. For whatever reason, there's a few other things that are specified, one of which is a height variance is variance greater than ten percent.
Right, ten percent is required.
It's actually ten percent.
Or ten or greater, excuse me.
I think originally we'd not used to give the planning board height variances.
Because you only see a couple of feet and then it gets taken to the D variance territory and you have to...
So there is a, a small amount that we're allowed to give.
Yeah, on your...
Ten percent.
Okay.
Correct.
On the five feet?
Thirty-five is...
Three point three.
Thirty-five.
Correct. That's me on the...
Right, you're allowed, you're allowed that ten percent.
All right, well, let's move on.
And then the, uh, the, uh, the other variance we're requesting is for the phase two addition. Mary said, we're requesting a one point, uh, three-five foot variance. It's just the way the architect laid out the building. They're very adamant that, oh, we need that additional one point three-five feet. I think it's de minimis, uh, addition of variance. We're going, again, we're going to mirror another heavily wooden property, and they had indicated they didn't have any problem with the, the buffer waivers, so...
What age students are they?
Sorry?
What age students are they? Elementary?
This is an elementary school.
Yes, an elementary.
There's no dormitory?
Nope.
No dormitory. And any outside simple halls, any outside...
Yeah, I'm sorry, no simple. I'm going to point that out.
No simple.
Okay, so you don't need any extra prop.
Correct. And at, and at this point, we, we're requesting, as with the applications that...
The correspondence.
The, yeah, the correspondence. We also are on septic. So our limit right now is a maximum of two hundred gallons per day from the school. So whatever combination of students and, and staff that is, we have to stay underneath that two...
Whatever the health department will allow, the maximum...
Exactly.
...you're allowed, whatever it is.
Correct.
Exactly, but we're, we have to, they like, they like to see in the resolution that we're limited to two thousand gallons per day.
After phase two?
While the type of parking is really, the calculations are based on the full build-out.
The full build-out.
Correct. And then in phase two, we would be able to build when sewer is available in the, in the area, so...
When is that? Around two years? It's every fall? We don't know.
They've been talking about bringing sewer up James Street for years, so...
And the maximum amount of students, they said it was four hundred?
Four hundred is, uh...
It's the maximum amount of...
Oh, eventual, eventual.
Yeah, one's one, so, yes, the maximum would be the four hundred.
So you're not going to build phase two until you have sewer?
Correct.
You want to build the shell again? How are you...
No, no, we're not, no.
This is not our path. It's a different program.
No, it's, uh, no, it's not, it's, it's not that way. We, we can build one piece of the school and then an addition of two.
So we are approving our phase one and phase two, but you will not commence to build phase two until you have the sewer launched, whatever.
Correct.
Can you just talk about, uh...
Is that clear, Mr. Jackson?
I don't recall putting that in the draft either, anything about phasing.
The draft resolution.
Yes, the draft resolution.
Uh, and, and realistically, you know, it's probably helpful for the applicant to have a phasing in our resolution, but what can we CO is going to be dependent on other jurisdictions. So we approved phases one and two, and it's up to them to get that add by eight to the add two or whatever.
I'm going to add to admission, the applicant may have phasing.
Well, the, the client shall phase one phase two.
Yeah, we shall.
We do.
And I, I would point out that if, for some reason, there's a change in the Board of Health rules and there's, and there's some way that, you know, we can have more, more septic capacity, then I don't think it's happening, but just in case, I don't know if I...
Don't hold your...
Well, I don't believe it, just assume.
You need outside agency approval.
Yes.
And whatever it takes, we get it.
Correct.
It's up to you.
Correct.
I, I just, I'm, I'm asking, I don't, I don't, the left, the left turn out of this property is, oh, it's, it's Prince Street, right?
Uh, it's, it's, there's nothing else on the street.
Yeah, I just want to, combined turnout.
The buses, the buses can jump, but there is no lot. There's a cul-de-sac and the other, the other half of Franklin has been vacant.
I just think, it, it works, the turnout works.
Oh, turnout?
Oh, for as far as the buses turning there, yes.
The bus is turning at the hopery on Franklin Street.
Correct.
Enough room, there's enough width.
There's no problem now.
Where are the buses going in? On which entrance?
They're going in, the buses will come in, the, what I saw, the, the east will be entered.
Okay.
And the west will be...
All right, there's no, there's no left turn out of the east driveway? Because you're too close to West Cross Street?
No, we're...
We're not, we're, we're not close to West Cross Street.
No, I'm sorry. This is the way it's drawn, radar.
When you do that?
We're three hundred and eighty feet from West Cross.
It's too far away.
Yeah, so we, we don't have any problem with even if a park, if a park comes out that driveway turns left.
And Franklin and, is, is a signalized, um...
Yes, it is. It's, it's, it's a continuation of James, so there is, it's a signalized intersection. Actually, the buses can either come from James, if you're straight, or they can come from bus, but it's...
Well, is there anything in the report that...
Is this going to... Yes.
What's with the trash?
That's what I was going to get to.
Uh, we, yeah, we got the, we got the review back from Public Works and they said it was going to be private pickup. We are going to go back into Public Works, go over the plan, and then we get it and discuss it. See if there's anything we've been doing, because we like public, public collection. I'll check.
Why didn't they want to septic?
I, I, I did not talk to them. We just get the, we get it back and I was surprised when I read it today and it said, and they checked off private collection.
Where are you showing it on?
Uh, we're showing, unless we get, we provide it connected on this site. There's the back of the secondary parking lot, so the trucks will go back in.
He has to back up all the way to Franklin?
Yeah.
Wow.
And, and that was, and that may be their issue with it. So we may have to relocate them or do something else so that we can get publicized.
Unless it could turn in, turn into the parking lot where the bus is? You could back into there and then go ahead out?
That is possible. And, and that's, that's what I'd like is have a secondary...
Like a cage, huh?
Correct.
What's the required parking? It's left of the page. On the front page of the plan, there's no, it doesn't mention what the required parking is.
The required parking...
What did Terry was fifty-eight?
Fifty-eight parking spaces.
What's the last?
And we will have fifty-nine.
You know, if you just curve the other side of the driveway, you can back to the truck right then and get that anyway, yeah.
Why do you think that? And that's what I, sorry, that's what I thought they would do, is they would back in. But that may be their issue. They don't want to pass all the way through the parking lot, but they...
Well, that's the way they go, you think?
If there's a problem with that turn, we can definitely correct the turn.
I think they're supposed to pick it up with their original degree.
Right. This one said, this one said, pump, private collection, so I don't want to, that's the only...
Yeah, I hope.
Think will be, uh, any of the others, the HBHC units will be on the roof, which I know we've had some concerns about that lately. And we'll be set back, and then those ten feet from the, from the parapet, so screening will be required. Other than that, we...
There will be a building parapet?
Yes, there are, there are building parapet.
So it's going to at least partially be shot?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
That was, that was what we meant. That's why I said, there should be no screening required.
And you agree with everything else in the report?
Other than that, we had no, we had no objections.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, any board members?
Mr. Garfield, yeah? On the traffic study, let's take into consideration, there's, I believe, twelve schools on course. There's one going up with fifteen hundred students. And traffic is tied up now. You've got a railroad course in every school bus that's stopped. And that's not, almost next to James. And there are a few, they, this is a traffic study, the information, but do they take into consideration all of the schools and all the traffic that's there now?
Well, they definitely take into consideration the schools that are there now. We can't take into consideration the schools that are coming in the future because they're based on actual traffic counts. So the traffic counts are based on what's there now, but it is...
The other one, the school with fifteen hundred is approved.
Which one has over fifteen hundred students?
It's down the street down toward the revenue tunnel, number eleven. Will we trail it or...
Yes, all that, they, they were taking into account the traffic, so it's done. And, and, uh, there is, there are two more current movements out of West Cross Street, but it's where they signalize any...
It backs up there, backs up to the railroad. There, at least, as you know, any school bus has to stop. And you get all these stopping, and now you've got another situation.
Right, but that's not, but again, that's, that's on West Cross Street, then...
That's not, they can come straight, they can really come straight to James.
You only have one way to outflow.
Not really, because with the way, this, this site is located on Franklin Boulevard, which is virtually a street that has almost nothing on it at the moment. And that, they can go straight out to James. The buses can go straight up James, and they don't have, they don't have to go on West Cross at all. At least, I, I imagine at least a number of them will.
They're going to run into, uh, the traffic center and you go through all of it.
And it's, that's what every, every alley has to put up with.
No, we, we, we need more, we need more schools. We need, we need place, we need places to put the kids. The reality is that there are lots and lots of students for next year who don't even have a classroom, don't have a desk to sit at. The reality is we need to build the schools. It, it does create traffic, we know that.
There's a lot of kids who aren't at school, so...
Yeah, they really, they really are. Ms. Flayfum, there really are a lot of children, both at the high school level and at the elementary school level, who still don't know where they're going to go to school next year because there just aren't, there just isn't enough room in the existing schools. And I'm not making this up.
The zoning allows for the school.
Yeah, no, I just, you know, just trying to...
Franklin, Franklin Boulevard is a dead end, right?
It's a dead end. The other, the other half of it was vacated. There's a cul-de-sac right, right past our property.
Wow.
Your property, school owns now, on the five hundred nineteen, lot nineteen?
We're under contract to purchase it. We don't own it, but nineteen is one of the lots, yes. The only one we don't own is eighteen.
And now it's going to be, then I'm going to put a pool in now.
Correct.
Right.
It's nothing on over there right now.
Eventually, when we get eighteen.
And you don't, and you don't need more? I think it'll help.
Well, we don't need, we, we, we don't need it from phase one. So, so the concept is, there's no reason to put it in now. We're going to have to come back in front of the board to get a pool approved at a later date, which we hope will be on lot eighteen, where it will make more sense. Because we're going to, we're going to maintain that buffer of the twenty feet, leave that area undisturbed at the request of the neighbor who owns lot twenty-one.
And the parking by the pool requires a variance, right?
No, that, that parking is no longer...
I know it's not there, but if you keep it, they would require a variance.
Yes, that parking did because it was within five feet of the, of the property line. So that's another reason why we took it out. Yes.
And exit, there's no variance.
Correct.
Okay. That's what I want to read out. And you're not asked if any variance is required?
We are not asking for any variance apart. There are two variances, again, that height variance and the variance for the foot and a half or foot, whatever it is, for the rear yard setback on phase two. Other than that, during the... What?
What time is school done?
School finished four forty-five is the oldest, the, the fifth through eighth get out at four forty-five.
Can we limit activity after six o'clock? Is there no simple, nothing like that?
I mean, there's no simple. There is no simple, but you can't really limit activity till after six o'clock. GTA, the, yeah, there's things that go on there.
I, I think the main thing is if you're saying there's no simple, then...
There's definitely no simple. It's on septic. We couldn't put a simple hole if we wanted to.
You're on septic until sewer comes?
Yeah.
No simple.
That's what I'm going to do, big, big...
Okay. Any other questions, any board members? Still no? We'll open it to the public. Anybody from the public would like to be heard, please come forward. If you're all guys, for the application, I have...
Okay, thank you.
It's just seven, it's just seven forty-five.
The only office that's reserved in this whole plan over here is on Avengers Office.
I will entertain a motion. What? What?
Can I, can I make a request? Because I see the neighbor from lot twenty-one is here. He was going to get up, but I think he's going to spare you, but can I make a request that all of those requirements that we put in about the twenty-foot undisturbed buffer for phase two lot twenty-one and the eight-foot wide line effects be placed in the resolution? Because I told the neighbor that we would do that.
Hold on.
I did email to the board earlier today, Grand Cross management had been prepared by House Office.
I'm just going to add it right now. I got it right now.
He's making changes to it as we speak regarding the little old pool, the variance, the parking space.
Which one is that?
Buffering a lot twenty-one.
Are you okay?
Tell me...
Well, he can't do that from there. He has to, sorry.
Mary, let, Mrs. Weinstein, just tell me what has to go in here as far as twenty-one.
What we're going to...
There, there shall be no pool. No pool.
And there will be no parking?
There will be no parking where?
Well, well, let's, on the southwest side of lot eighteen, there will be no parking.
So you don't parking on the south... Southwest, what?
Side, southwest side of lot eighteen.
Okay.
Four spaces being added.
Four parking spaces are being added to the main parking area for a total of fifty-nine parking spaces.
Why, why can't we do resolutions two weeks' long?
I, I, I don't know. We, we request this. We have no problem if we do the resolution, do it three or four weeks, but...
I, I got a request to do it now. I've already done it. It's been circulated. I'm going to tell...
It wasn't from, it was not, I just want to make one thing clear. It was not, the request was not from the applicants.
Yeah, you, you don't get a, get a jail ticket at all.
It wasn't. I didn't do it this time. Sometimes you do.
I know. Who requested it? It's concerned, Frank? Who requested it? Not, not that one, huh? There was an hour back.
On this application?
He asked me during, uh, when it is.
I was just, yeah.
Is he the builder on this one? This one?
Yeah, he is.
Is the building...
He is, I mean...
Is that, is the building standing or waiting out?
No.
He wants to stop the roads.
It's not an emergency. We could really take it into, I'm telling you, I'm telling you, you said you could look at it and you... It's not an emergency. We could really take it into, I'm telling you, I'm telling you that you, you said you could look at it, and you could pass it in two weeks. We don't have to be...
Whatever you want to do. I mean, I have it ready. It's been circulated.
I haven't seen it, but whatever. I, I think, I think we should just do it in two weeks, just so everybody can see it, but...
It's like the Zoro, arguing against it for a resolution.
So pass it, but you see.
She wants to be able to review it. One at a time, one at a time, first way.
I just want to see, first of all.
Tell me what else?
Okay.
Fifty-nine, fifty-nine spaces, no parking on the southwest side of lot eighteen, four parking spaces will be added to the main for a total of fifty-nine. What else?
There will be a twenty-foot buffer.
Right.
We're going to keep the area in its, in its undisturbed current state. That's a twenty-foot buffer to lot twenty-one. What side is that? I guess southwest. On the southwestern side of the property. Sorry, I'm not thinking of that. On the southwestern side of the property, the applicant agrees to maintain a twenty-foot buffer by keeping the area in its current undisturbed state.
Okay.
And installing an eight-foot by white line fence along that entire boundary, along the entire boundary line between our property and lot twenty-one.
Does their front setback involve there that we've been married to that fence?
Uh, no, because it's twenty-foot back. Uh, it's not front door.
Oh, that's a good match, though.
It's not front door.
Okay, thank you very much. What ask for motion on this application? Mrs. Sable moves, and Mr. Rambis seconds. Roll for it, please.
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yeah.
Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Mr. Pringle?
Yes.
Mr. Renner? Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Slap him right there.
Thank you so much. It's suffering.
If there's a gap, it's a pretty important block, that's not the hazard.
GTA is at the school. Please leave quietly, we have to continue. Okay, let's go on to number four. Okay, number five, how do you want to announce it?
Number five is SC twenty-three, twenty-three for a chess club protest.
That's the protest.
Minor subdivisions to create three lots from one and thirty good road. Um, I believe his application was for the four, three, four lots, was nine.
Four oh five, yeah. Four, first, four.
Uh, there also was question, I had a question about those that were sent to one of the neighbors. And they said, "Mr. Jackson, if there are rare occasions, make their requirement to the ten day notice." There is over the variance.
Yes, it's time, it's over there.
Uh, as indicated, shh. Page three of our letter. Variants are requested, including the amount of lot area and the amount of lot width.
That's correct.
That's it?
Pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Joseph Keshuba, KBA Engineering Services, Madison Square, New Jersey.
Raise your hand. Do you swear a firm testimony before the court with the truth altered or nothing?
I do. First off, thank you for postponing, so I can finish up my other meeting. Uh, as indicated by Terry, it's a pretty straightforward application. We have a thirty-five thousand, six hundred forty-six square foot lot in our twelve zone. And where we reported previously for a four-lot subdivision. I believe at that time, the comment from the board was come back to three. Here we are. Uh, it's a, an odd-shaped lot, a unique lot on the corner of Oasis and Guds with the frontage on Jewel Court as well.
Was this the lot that there was some drainage issues on?
Uh, I don't believe there was drainage issues. This was the lot that was subject to a...
The township made something of drainage on it?
The township put some drainage on the property. Actually, one of the developers got approval, put some drainage on the property without permission. There was some agreements with the township.
And was that ever straightened out?
As you think?
Was that ever straightened out?
Uh, I believe it's still kind of in the works, and the subdivision is kind of part of that agreement. So that, hence the reason we came in for the four-lot subdivision. Obviously, the board saw that that was commensurate with the areas, and we came back with something that's...
The drainage will work with the three-lot subdivision?
Yes.
Is your client here?
Uh, I believe he was, it's on, a little while.
Mr. Jackson, you remember this application?
Pardon me?
You remember this application? It was some opposition drainage to the country.
My concern is that we've had several individual applicants who have not been represented by an attorney. If the applicant doesn't have an attorney here, the applicant should be here because Joseph Keshuba cannot play attorney.
Right, that's, you can't represent people who are not currently, that's... I don't have a problem with you testifying, but I'd like the person to be in the room.
Which person? Was the applicant, or somebody else?
Well, I, I...
I can, I can check in the back and see if he's here.
Please.
You're not supposed to represent people in the corporation, I definitely can't do, but I, I just think it's a bad practice to not even have the applicant present.
So you have that position, uh...
Sorry, are you out there to represent?
Uh, check on that. We're, we're finding this application.
So should we go on to number seven?
We've, uh, we have spoken to the applicant. He's on the way, but he's not here currently, so if you want to push us through.
Okay, I will still have to step in there. You may not get hurt, then.
And it's up to you. You can wave it. I just say, you know, be careful. You can get yourself in trouble.
Yo, why don't you start, and then we'll have the applicant show up in the middle?
That, that's perfectly fine. The board's aware, we, we're previously here, we, we have...
Is that okay?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the attorney rules enforcement police are going to bust me down or anything. I just think it's a bad practice under the circumstances.
Can we stop in the end?
I do think the applicant was here when we denied the F B.
The applicant was here at the last, okay.
Or at least some space.
So maybe you might go.
He's scared, he's scared we're going to demand again.
Why would he demand?
Last one wanted to build four lots. Four lots, there's a drainage issue from the township or something.
Okay, so his wife is on the way, which is for the applicant.
Go ahead.
So we are looking for a lot area variance of eleven thousand, five hundred forty square feet in our twelve zone on lot thirteen point oh two, uh, which is the corner lot on Guds and Oasis. We also were looking for a lot width variance of seventy-eight point two-two feet on lot thirteen point oh one, this lot here, and eighty-eight point three-nine feet on thirteen point oh three, uh, which is the lot that fronts on Jewel Court, uh, where ninety feet's required. So the one on Jewel Court is just barely noncompliant to annual odd lot. And the lot on, on Guds widens out substantially at the rear of the property. Uh, but due to the unique shape of the property, uh, it makes developing with conforming lots impossible.
That's the only variances?
Those are the only variances, correct. Uh, variances can be granted under both the C-one and C-two criteria. The C-one hardship, uh, due to the unique nature of the lot, specifically the shape of it, makes full conformance difficult, creating a hardship to develop the property in manner set forth in the zone. Under the C-two criteria, the better planning criteria, uh, the purposes of zoning are promoted by the deviation of the standards. Uh, promotion of the general welfare. Purpose A and purpose E promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, and communities. Uh, the site promotes the general welfare by developing in accordance with the master plan. Uh, specifically, the master plan notes, uh, it has been prepared to provide the municipality an up-to, up-to-date master plan document that reflects the township's current conditions and values, responds to current challenges. Key among these challenges is the need to address the significant population and housing growth which the municipality has experienced and will continue to experience. Uh, the master plan also calls for using smart growth principles. This, uh, smart growth, this plan utilizing the smart growth principles provides for housing while remaining consistent with the intended zoning and addresses any consistency in this particular block. Again, we're short in totality, the entire subdivision, about four hundred square feet. Uh, so my professional opinion is to be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the master plan or the zoning ordinance, will not have any substantial detriments to the public good. There's no diminut, uh, minimus reduction in lot area, meets all the coverages, meets all the setbacks, commensurate with all the other subdivisions that surround, fits well into this portion of the plan. That's the, uh, the statement I will testify to.
The, what do you say walks on all streets?
Yes.
And how many parking spaces?
Uh, four stalls per lot.
Where is the drainage problem on the lot?
The worst drainage problem is that they built some drainage on the property, on the property owner.
Where is that at?
I believe it was, uh, uh, some of the piping and that along the frontage here, and then the pipe for them all through here. We connected Jewel Courts in here, and they had construction on the property.
Went out the private parking?
On the private property.
Yeah, well, you see the pipes made up to the side.
Yeah.
As far as, there's no drainage issues right now?
No, no, I don't, I don't believe the issue was a drainage issue, uh, creating a flooding problem. I believe it was just...
Was a flooding problem?
No, I said, I, I don't believe that was a concern. I believe the concern was more construction.
Okay, well, assume here there's neighbors here. Any, any board members have any questions? I will open it to the public. Anybody from the public would like to be heard, please come forward. Please state your name to the record.
Hi, my name is Martin Saucer. I live on seventeen Oasis.
S, 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 L, Z, E, R.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm testimony before the court with the truth altered or nothing?
I do.
Please proceed.
And, uh, just give me your address, please.
Seventeen, one-seven Oasis. I was the one who signed, or my wife did that yesterday, because we had not gotten the notice, but I believe, um, provided it came by yesterday.
You're speaking from Michael, should I?
Signed. So the, the reason I'm here, really, um, it's not about this particular, um, you know, lot. And, and as the planner had said before, the variances might not seem that big. But the issue that I have is that it's taking a lot that does not have enough, according to the current municipal land use law, it's taking a one, one family house lot and trying to split it into three. Last time we came before here, the issue, or at least the reason why we came out in opposition, wasn't because of any drainage issues. It was simply because we're trying to split it into four and create way undersized lots. So that was, that was really the reason why it's denied. Right now, um, it wouldn't be obviously as undersized, missing just four hundred feet. But at the end of the day, this is going to add, um, two more houses, and it's going to go from basically a one family with two cars to, um, three, and you gotta assume there's going to be four cars per, so it's going to be twelve. So we're going to, you know, it's already going to be increasing from two to eight, and they want to go to twelve. I mean, that's really the issue. The other issue is that it's going to be opening up onto Oasis Court. Um, we bought the property, several of the neighbors got together. We were, when we, um, built our own houses, we deliberately did not come for any variances. And personally, when I built my house, um, I could have saved some money because it's a weird shaped lot. And if I could have come for variance, and we deliberately did not come because we wanted to keep the, the, the nature of the block. And, you know, we start with variances, and then, you know, everybody else comes with variances, and it changes the character. Now, I feel, you know, I understand he bought this property, um, he wants to get it, I would be doing the same thing. But again, the municipal law is very clear that to change the, or to grant any variances, the benefits have to outweigh the detriment. Now, who's going to benefit from this? It's very clear. It's the owner or whoever invested with it. Who's, who's it going to be a detriment to? Everybody who lives on that block and frankly, that neighborhood. Now, the planner before here said, um, forgot your name, apologies, um, says that this promotes the general welfare of the town, I guess. Well, and, and the need for more growth. Well, if you look around you, and it's not just, you know, I could speak for my neighborhood, but the same is true for the rest of the town. The, the major issue of growth is traffic, let's face it, and schools, obviously. There's not enough schools. So squeezing in an extra house with two more families, how does that promote the growth and the welfare of this town? It does not, right? Let's, let's be very clear about this, right? So there is a, he has a lot, he can subdivide it into two. Sure, it'll be nice oversized lots, which by the way, it'll, you know, it'll be very desirable, bigger lots, it's a very nice neighborhood. He'll get some more money for it, maybe not as much as, you know, getting three out of it. But at the end of the day, we got to stick to the rules. And, you know, if he had enough to subdivide it, I wouldn't be here. This is not. This should be divided into two at most. And adding any more houses just will add to traffic in the neighborhood. There's going to be less parking on that block. Um, and the other thing I want to add, and I'll end with this, is that typically, you know, and I've been at a lot of these meetings, typically when the argument is made that it promotes the, the, you know, the benefits that are going to be provided is improvements, right? So bringing in a road, water, sewer, electric, whatever. All this has been done already by people who built this block, and this is letting me get up next and give more details. I'm not going to go into it. So I don't begrudge him coming along and taking the advantage of the opportunity and having all the improvements already done. And by the way, the fact that there's Oasis Court there, which wouldn't have been there, allows him to sort of situate the house and make it a lot more desirable. So I'm perfectly fine with that. I'm not fine with, you know, coming back and, and asking that we add yet another house in there, which is going to add traffic, is going to add, um, to, you know, compensation on the block, and, and, you know, overall, just more traffic. I mean, that's really my issue, and I feel bad, you know, that, but at the end of the day...
All right, Terry, we're just getting in.
So, all right, so I'll end with this. I mean, essentially, I think it's time of the board, and I trust the board will do the right thing. But, but if this were to ever go to court, I don't see how it would stand up to say that this is for the benefit, that the benefits outweigh the detriments to the people who live in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Any rights, the board would like to be heard? Okay, please state your name to the record.
Nathan Schlesinger, twenty-one Oasis Court.
You spelled the last name.
S-C-H-L-E-S-I-N-G-E-R.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm testimony before the court with the truth altered or nothing?
Yes. What I'm trying to address with the board tonight is, and dear Venn, that, you know, do granted, I understand it's not a major variance. I just think here is fair, and there should be some stuff that they, we feel the applicant should partake and share. For instance, at this point, uh, if you look to the board's side of Oasis Court, all these are backyards, a lot of people. This is going to be the only one that's in front of Oasis Court. We need Oasis Court, only has houses on the left. This one's going to be the only one that's turning out to our road. But what I'm saying is, we were going to come back to the board and ask for a change. Because we have sidewalks going up all along Oasis Court on the left-hand side, all the way, uh, including the cul-de-sac. But we were going to take away, we wanted to come and ask to take away the sidewalks on the right-hand side. And instead, we're going to put bushes and benches, which may cost us more money, but we think it's going to be more beautiful for the block. And we spoke about it with all the neighbors. It makes a lot more sense than looking at somebody's backyard. So at this point, uh, if he's turning out two Oasis Courts, so what I would ask is, that sidewalk that has to be in front of his house should be obviously his problem. In other words, he has to put that in because that's going to be facing the front of his house. Same thing is, he has the second lot, the backyard, the back lot, Oasis Court. We want to put bushes from there going up all the way to the right-hand side.
Can you go back to the first one? Which sidewalk can you want?
Okay. When we, when we, when we gone from the Guds Road, we made that left onto Oasis.
Okay.
Now, the north side, this runs from east to west, the north side of Oasis Court, the whole backyards and... All the houses on Oasis Court are situated on the left. We have sidewalks, all the... We have sidewalks all the way on the left, going all the way up the cul-de-sac and coming around the circle. We would then come back to this board and ask to do away with the original occupation, so that we have to bring the sidewalks down again on the north side. It still doesn't really make sense for the sidewalks, red, put bushes and trees, and bring, it may cost us more money, but it's still better because we have backyards and people here, so if we can put these bushes that grow up to be 25 feet, we have a nice kind of wall, acceptable in people's backyards and anything possible.
So everything else on Oasis Court is a backyard?
Correct, on the right side, on the north side, it will be a backyard from jewels. The only houses we have on Oasis, they're on the left-hand side, and one on the top, there's nothing on the right. So, it, it, from, from a planning perspective, and from just kind of sense, it makes sense, why would we have to put, uh, on the side with backyards and people, nobody needs it, nobody's gonna walk there. Instead, if we just put some bushes all on again, we'd, we'd eventually, well, how beautiful, about growing up trees, and when they mature, it'll look so much better than the actual lot. But at this point, that he says out, he wants to open up the Oasis Court.
All right, we require sidewalks on both sides. Do you understand what he wants to do?
Uh, not quite, but the applicant is not requesting a way with sidewalks.
He wants to eliminate the sidewalks.
Correct. What I'm saying is that the original, the original occupation for Oasis Court requires us to have both sides. We're gonna come back to this board and ask for a change, to away with the right-hand side, if nobody uses this, and won't be used as backyards and people.
So let's, let's back up here. The application that where it's required, the sidewalks for Oasis Court, is really a Julie Court application, if I'm understanding correctly?
I believe, I believe Mr. Schlesinger is in the, they are gonna come back for their own waiver and not install this sidewalk on this side.
On which side?
On the north side.
So you're driving down Oasis on the right-hand side?
Correct.
Because they all backed up, just as our proposed house, our, our proposed house and, and this lot here is one of the back of the house is gonna face Oasis. Our applicant, my client, they have all objection, putting bushes there as well, if the board, board's all fit, that would benefit.
Are you putting bushes in the right of way?
I believe that's what he's in.
The same place where it's supposed to the sidewalk, right, instead of sidewalks, we won't put any of that, put bushes.
So we do our shade trees, we can certainly put them in the shade trees and random.
Oh, yeah, I mean, shade trees, whatever, it's, it's, that's all there is on the property, I just went up on my property, just all the way on the top. I just put 35 bushes all the way right side of my property.
I don't think that the board should be considering what they would do if they were to grant a sidewalk waiver for a different project that they're not likely to grant. I mean, the board's not even had the granting sidewalk waivers, this is a separate application, it is already under construction, and has nothing to do with the application.
What I'm saying is, if this house turns out, and this becomes this front on Oasis Court, like every other single family, okay, that being approved here, you have to put sidewalks?
Unfortunately, the previous developer was already required to install them, and I don't see that this applicant...
So what I'm pointing out is that...
...for your course, and saying, in the future, I'm threatening to ask for this waiver, and you're gonna grant it, then you should make this on.
I, I, I think it does make sense that to grant something a waiver that you can't have legally on the books, and given, and as a waiver, a lawsuit's wired, that would make sense that you partake in that stuff.
I think, I think, I think, I think that instead of talking about what might happen in the future, I, 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 forget about the fact it might come, it might not come, that doesn't matter, just tell us what you would like to see there.
What I would like to see, if this house eventually turns out here, I'd just see some sidewalks coming from this side of this property, and bring it around this side of this property, all the way to the end of this property. If it's not required, I'm fine.
Sidewalks, that's it.
Sidewalks for here, and we'll just put it back.
Okay, so that's it, so forget about what you might comment for later, that really doesn't matter right now? So you, thank you, that, that's what you'd like to see.
That's what I think, if you did one other issue, there's one other issue, and that, that is, that since he's turning out two Oasis Courts, chances are, not chances are, I mean, ninety-nine percent, he's gonna have to open the store again, to get the sewer, water, everything else, and we install, which, at this point, I have to keep my bond open and pay work, and I'm not going to pay the road again right now, but everything's completed, which means that my bond has to go on for another year, I think it just makes sense, he partakes, he's out on the road, that, in other words, I can just close out my bond and pay the store, because if it opens up again, I don't wanna do that.
Right, in other words, his construction shouldn't affect your bond?
What I'm saying is, he, he's gonna open it up later, I don't wanna go ahead and pay for final payment on this road.
Yeah, I got it, right, we can work that out.
I have to keep my bond open.
No, the municipal law is that your bond cannot be released until that top quote is down. So you'll either have to jump the gun and put the top quote down, knowing that someone else is gonna come in and destroy the street, or you'll have to keep your bond open. I do not believe the township, the township has the ability or the procedures to release your bond if the top stays down.
I'm not asking for this, all I'm asking is, if he's partaking, because we're leaving this whole board disapplication one more time, technically, he can't get to build that house, right? What I'm saying is, if I was okay with it, and he's going to build it, it's fine, I don't wanna pay and rip it off after. What I'm saying is, it costs the legislature, it's like five thousand dollars to keep the bond open, and it makes sense that it's wired from his own property, that he, he partakes.
But that's a private issue.
It's a private issue, we can require it.
Well, we, you, you can deny that some cases, which I'm not asking at this point, too, what I'm saying is, if he would grant, it's only a variance.
No, 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 you should not be on the hook for his construction, I, I get it.
And, and I believe the law is written that if we would, if we top, we would have to come in.
And I'm happy to throw that up, because he, you should not be on the hook for his construction if it's approved.
Correct, and, and he shouldn't be, we agree. Uh, the applicant does have a, a allowable lot right now, we could go put water and sewer services in in the next coming weeks, if we wanted to, so we can certainly work that out. And get that sooner or later, if it's not covered by law.
I, I'm finally, this is the record, uh, candidate on this property, since he wanted to go to the question, he was known for the property question at hand once, but it's easy to provide, now, the sign across the property, that's what they're probably, maximum, it's a damage, that's what, that's all that happened. It's not currently said this property never was, doesn't matter. Uh, long days, if this, well, this goes up, if he has to do something, but it may soon do that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Another property, further, it's not part of the property that's been built, after this third property.
It's a little property that's based in fact. I believe the concern that they have is essentially the, the rear lot thirteen point oh three, the fact that that's a through lot, and the rear of that lot also fronts an Oasis. We would have, I should do, rather than doing just standard shade trees, doing a row of marver bighties in the six-foot shade trees, to create that screen up.
Better one side walks, it's in one tree here, and this one's two.
So it's not in the right way, it's not a whole, right?
Thirteen, thirteen point oh three fronts to Julie Court?
Fronts to dual court, driveway's on dual court, but we do, the property does, also front and Oasis Court at the back. What we can offer is, that's we would put a row of marver bighties in the shade trees, and to create that screen to block the rear yard from Oasis.
Now, the, what would, does Oasis continue further down?
Yeah, Oasis continues further back.
Okay, so eventually, we're gonna read this.
Eventually, what, what Mr. Schlesinger was indicating, they would likely come back and look to do a similar thing on the remainder lot, has no bearing on this tonight, but that's a big one.
There is no other lots after that, all the other lots are backyard to dual, there is no more.
So could you do your, your landscaping to, I guess, the north, to the, to the north of the sidewalk?
North of the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Why we have to talk, okay, who's the son, who's the first one?
Okay, I, I, I think, I think we should be talking about, okay, might do later on.
Okay.
Yeah, it really has nothing to do with it.
But there's, there's ownership issues there.
Yeah.
So Oasis has, one sec, so Oasis has, it's a cul-de-sac, on one side of the cul-de-sac is the rear yard from the properties, and one is the frontage?
Correct, if you're driving down Oasis, if you look to your right, you're looking at the rear yards and the lots on dual court. If you look to your left, you see the front of the houses, that front on Oasis.
If you make two, two, two properties in a lot, you can still make facing Oasis.
Correct, we, no matter what, any way you subdivide this, there's gonna be two lots that face out on Oasis, so this has no additional impact as a result of this subdivision, as the two lots subdivision.
Terry, what do you recommend?
I recommend the flow charge to follow this. Um, from what I think I'm hearing, your proposing buffer within the shade trees, not right of way.
Correct.
I hear what's being said about the sidewalk, the sidewalk is not part of this application, I don't think you should have any way.
It is.
What's with the other?
Yes, it is.
I don't want the engineer asking for a sidewalk waiver in front of this board.
No, Terry, he's asking that this applicant should not put the sidewalks on Oasis behind thirteen point oh three, which reasons, Terry?
I was under the impression that that was sidewalk was, was required on the dual system.
This sidewalk here, on, on dual, yes, that's required, part dual state.
On proper thirteen oh three.
I believe the chairman is saying, on the Oasis front of the lot thirteen point oh three, you're questioning whether we extend sidewalks there or not.
The current wind that we have shows.
Sidewalk.
Show sidewalk, currently, the Oasis subdivision shows sidewalk to be installed, continually from.
And, correct.
So you're looking for a gap just for the rear of that one lot?
That's what will be created if the adjacent subdivision wasn't granted a waiver, if they came and requested it, you would have a sixty-foot gap.
So, so then the question is, if I understand correctly, the bottom plan of buffer within the shade trees, which all, that helps.
Which will create that, that buffer.
If you put a sidewalk in, what about people over in these lots, who may need that access?
It's only the rear, it's only the rear property, one at a time.
Let's, let's, let's keep the sidewalks in, we've been trying to get sidewalks in, let's keep the sidewalks in. It sounds like the Oasis Court already has sidewalks, and he wants to come back for relief on it.
Right.
That's a total different argument, so let's put the sidewalks in according to the law.
My client, likely, would not have a, would not have a sidewalk in later.
Then we'll put sidewalks in.
If they come back for a waiver, my client, I'm sure, would like to save the money, too, if, you know, he's not gonna wanna create the gap, but if everyone comes in at once to request the waiver, we can certainly do that. But for now, there's sidewalks proposed on the other side, and there's sidewalks proposed here. I think we would ask for the sidewalks, and if the waiver request come in, we would gladly.
I think I'd like, I think the chairman, I think it's gonna give us in the board time to look at the facts, and the facts may warrant what the gentleman's asking for, but we just don't know right now.
Okay, so right now, what, what's before us is an application with sidewalks on Oasis.
I would recommend acting on that, with the buffer that was talked about in the easement, and obviously, if a request from the neighbor later to take the sidewalk out wants to be made.
You'll have to review it.
They can make that, and we would have time, and you would have time, to look at the installation, and decide if it's correct or not.
And we can understand that.
Correct. Well, I saw.
Okay, what do you mean, we should act on what the buffer requested in the easement?
There was testimony to add buffer, the applicant agreed to add buffer in the shade trees, not right of way. Shade trees, which was simply add, add buffer for the local property, the rear of lot thirteen.
So it'll, it'll achieve what the, uh, Mr. Schlesinger was asking, while also staying in the easement, keeping the sidewalk, I think it's the best of both worlds.
Okay, anybody else?
I heard you had a few words.
Just one thing I want to address, I mean, I'm not gonna be full of politics about that pipe or not, but here's the deal, when we did the, uh, construction over here, was to benefit everybody to be able to have proper drainage that we needed to come through with that pipe, otherwise, if that pipe was gonna go on God's road, it was gonna be a conflict for us bringing up sewer and water to our road, that's the reason why that was created. In this case, he's coming in here and asking for the variance and everything else, we think that that should be part of it, that he's okay with giving his, which I understand is ten feet or ten feet that he wants. It's not, he's not building anything, there's a ten foot, uh, ten foot setback anyway, to the sidewalk, to the back, so he has an issue that he's not big enough easement there. Since this was created to serve the whole area, including, uh, Oasis Court, I think that should be granted, and he should give that as a, as a condition. I mean, the board has gone out of their way to give him three lots, when he's not being entitled to it. That was, that was done in a questionable easement, whether or not he needs 20 feet or not, but the idea was to benefit the whole area, to make it possible to bring up water and sewer and proper drainage, which we did on our expense, so the least that we're asking is, we don't have that trouble that keeps on bugging, by going back to the town, should maybe take that up, maybe not take that up, since he needs anyway ten foot setback regardless, why should that be a 100% deletion?
The board has no jurisdiction of settling the private use of this property, you will the case on the fourth floor, you can't rule in favor of one or against the other, and somehow pick one an advantage or disadvantage. What the private property rights are regarding easements is between them, and, and this board should really, you know, let them sort that out, okay, to go to the board, we can't be the arbiter.
Yes, the board, the board, I'm not gonna be interrogated, that's my advice to the board.
Okay, thank you very much.
I believe that's our case.
What?
You know what I'm talking about, this water and sewer now, that's not the old property's problem, but, but.
Correct, the water and sewer down the road, there's, there's a drainage, quite concerned, I, I'm not at liberty to, you know, say we can certainly give an easement right now, because there are other matters dealing with that. Uh, I, you know, the board attorneys indicated.
Just one second, anybody else in the public would like to be heard on this application? Seeing no one, we'll close it to the public, okay?
So we would present the application as we have, and request, do you grant it to the owner here?
Yeah, the owner said applicant should.
Yes, we want this here in the way.
I would ask for a motion on this application.
It's a lot.
I would move to approve that application. Okay, we have, we have a second.
I, I, I second, but I, with the caveat that he should share in the, that his construction shouldn't affect the performance, the current performance guarantee.
Is there a way to do that?
I, I, I believe what the law said, I was that they completely separate, they completely function separately, I believe what Mr. Schlesinger was asking was that...
They should chip in.
If he doesn't want, if he personally doesn't want the top phase of this, and have a bond open, because that makes more sense to wait until the other construction is done, he's asking that the applicant should contribute to the cost of keeping the lot open for that period of time. I simply am indicating, I don't think that's the board's jurisdiction, Mr. Schlesinger tries to, I'm saying.
How can we, how can we put a condition in that?
I know, they didn't, they didn't.
Listen, pass it, say, say, you argue a half hour for your damn sidewalk, are you gonna put it in? Just put it in.
Can we all?
I'll respond on this.
We had Mr. Franklin and Ally speaking at the same time, Mr. Franklin, what did you say?
Oh, he was upset about the sidewalks, he wants the sidewalks, that's okay, we're doing the sidewalks, we're doing that.
All right, so, and, we have a motion, there's a second, caveat.
The only thing is, I don't think that we can require, like Ally's saying, require, one sec, and requiring him to, to chip in, to pay for the bond.
Is there a way?
Is there a way?
Yeah, as it testified as situated, we will, we can submit for order of sewer application now, and have it ended next month to sixty days, so, so we don't delay.
If Mr. Schlesinger were to complete his work and, and want desire to have his bond back sooner than, than the neighbor's, than his work, it'll just cost the new applicant more to have the return, so it certainly wouldn't fall on his shoulders.
It's fully his right to top the road anytime he wants, when he's ready.
And there will be a...
We would have to pay to top that force of the road.
So there's, and send it to your client.
To do it as soon as possible.
Get it done.
Yeah. If we don't get it in quicker, it's gonna cost us a lot more money.
Okay, so...
So would you agree to do it within a ninety-day timeframe?
I don't know if you could do it with the water company, if they're gonna guarantee.
It's subject to the water company, we would agree to make the application immediately.
Okay, okay.
Does that work, Charlie?
Justin, you okay with that?
Yeah, that's on.
Okay. So, Mr. Bennett makes a motion, and just a second, please.
And the buffer?
Yeah, definitely.
The buffer in the easement.
The buffer in the, the rear front house.
Shade trees.
Mr. Garfield?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Here.
Mr. Staple?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Hertzler?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
Thank you very much, and thank you for waiting.
Okay. That's the last one, right, tonight?
It's, uh, oh, he's here, he didn't hear you.
Erso, don't.
It's Sophie, she said that's the last one for tonight, right?
Wait, wait, I think the cameras just went off.
Don't tell them when the cameras are going off, I don't wanna stay at that long.
Do you want me to continue?
Yes, please.
Our next, and final application for the night is SC twenty-three thirty-four, made by David Hurstoff, this is the main subdivision of seven lots off East County Line and East Kennedy. Um, there was previously a seven lot subdivision denial on this property, this is a new seven lot application, I'm sure the applicant will be able to address residue comment, which is not obtained a question for this.
Okay, Terry, do you have anything to do on your report, or is this a report?
Uh, this is our report, and we're gonna let this.
Okay.
Talking about submission waivers. Talking about submission waivers, one of the waivers that was submitted to motion the county planning board, they're not going to address.
Yeah, the original, it's been submitted, it didn't affect, even though we revised the plans, it didn't affect the original submission to the planning boards, we still have the.
So you don't need that one?
We don't, correct, we don't need that.
I believe the county gave specific direction that the previous submission had been completed and not completed for the application. I guess the mission we made for the old application is so not completed, I'd rather have it with the new application.
Old application was submitted.
Terry.
For our testimony, I'll give you proof of work to trip the whole trip and not go up here. I do, Brian Flonery Jackson, New Jersey licensed professional engineer, professional planner. So the old application was deemed incomplete, it was submitted. Uh, it's virtually the same impact on the county road. Uh, so the checklist says you have to submit, we submit.
The primary purpose of the submission requirement is to make sure the county aware.
Yes, yes.
Continuing on, we have fee waivers for top of con doors features within two RCs, EIS, pre-protection management, architectural drawing, street lanes. We support the fee, the three fee waivers based upon the current design. We support the EIS based on the fact that the site has no known varmel constraints. Submission waiver for pre-protection management, we support for theory purposes only. If the applicant is approved, we'll have to have a fine pre-protection plan to be submitted to the city clients. Partial submission waivers requested for architectural designs, we have two versus the four minimum. And then finally, as discussed at the family meeting, street line, street lighting design must be finalized for a waiver requested. The waivers required to propose street lighting design has not been finalized. And the half width of major avenue have been proposed for site improvement. And that's the waivers.
Do we have a motion to go along with the engineering decisions?
Well, what do you say was supposed, four was supposed to be submitted, only two?
There's a partial waiver, UPO requires four basic house designs for major we have to.
So you're supposed to have four designs?
The checklist requires four, correct.
What if you make only one design?
I think the checklist item is to ensure that you comply with the requirements of value advantage and access.
That's my understanding.
So be here to be two different.
But realistically, that's probably something we're not.
I'm going to step down on this application.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the waivers, all in favor, I, okay. Answer zone in.
Going under seventy, our comment number two, we have versions that require several lots for minimum lot area, similarly the minimum lot width. Some of the properties based upon the architectural plans and based on UPO would require a six parting spaces where four shown. I'm sure we'll have testimony on that shortly. Just want to touch upon, that's indicated on page five, we also have design waivers to revise plans that show to two approved half width of major avenue. Which is acceptable as long as we have a temporary turnaround for the use of permits. A waiver is also required along street that have street trees along the frontage. And a partial design waiver is requested from sidewalk along the entire East County Line road frontage. I believe it's.
Ally, you mentioned they.
Excuse me, Ally, you mentioned a residue of product issue?
Yes, there was previously seven lot denial on this same property, I believe the layout's the same, they simply proposed paving half of a major avenue. But I'm sure Mr. Flonery can point out any other things.
Why is this a different application, just as a preview? Because as the board knows, if it's a substantially similar application, the board can, say, here we decided that one, we said no last time. So they have to show that something's different.
Even if it's the exact same application, could we go back and revisit it and?
Well, that becomes tricky. Um, one of the things is the zoning's changed, the master plan's changed, the time has passed, so I wouldn't answer anything in an absolute. But the case was a little varic.
The good news is that the layout did change. Previously, they were. Yes.
It's where our testimony gave before the board to trip the whole truth and.
Yes, I do.
So I'll just get to that point first.
Well, the prior application, the majority of the lots were less than fifteen thousand square feet, the majority of the lots were not conforming. This application, the majority of lots do have a conforming lot area. Additionally, the layout was changed, it was a big lot in the back, it's a totally different application. Uh, and we're improving major avenue. So I think just the changing of the lot lines and the lot areas to make more lots conforming.
It's the board's judgment if you think that's a significant change, you can decide at the end of the case.
Okay.
I hear your whole case first.
Mr. Flonery, I have a minute. One thing when reviewing the three denial application, I just felt one thing that caught my eye, which was that a right away dedication along East County Line Road, which may be required by the county, would increase the magnitude of the area damage. Does that still apply here?
That's the, that's the same comment we would have in the report. Our anticipation is that there's not going to be a right away dedication, that any additional area that's needed can be done in a road wide easement. Uh, we don't have a complete application to the county, so we haven't got to that point. If there is a problem with reducing the lot area, we know we have to come back to it.
Okay, thank you.
So if it's finalized an easement, what would be the worst of the lot?
Well, the easement doesn't take any property away, so the property stays exactly the way it is. And based on the county road plan, we don't think there's anything that they're asking for. The problem with the county right away is in this area, the county consultant that they hired changes like every few months, where the proposed right away is going to be, so we're shooting at a moving target. Uh, the last application that was submitted stopped when we got a denial because there's no reason getting approval from the county if you get a denial locally. Uh, then the applicant came back with the conceptual plan with the layout that we have, got positive feedback from the board, repaired the plans, and we haven't gone through the motions with the county yet at this point.
Okay, just about the sidewalk, can we discuss that?
Sidewalk on County Line Road, if I submitted the application, I would not put a sidewalk waiver in. I am not going to ask for a sidewalk waiver, I know the board's not going to give it to us. So we're putting in sidewalk. The report also says in the application was filed saying, we're asking for parking variance. We're not asking for parking variance, these are going to be custom homes, the custom homes have enough room to fit parking. The ordinance says we got to submit typical plans, typical plans were submitted, when the engineer put them on the lots, the parking doesn't fit the way he put them on the lots. This is not what's going to be built. When you have seven custom lots like this, you have no idea what the architecture is going to be. So the ordinance says, and it only says it recently because the board had applications where it made sense to see the architectural, and everybody said, well, it's not on the checklist, so you guys put it on the checklist. So now the applicants have the decision, do we ask for a waiver, which is a bad word, that's almost like a four letter word, or do we submit plans, and then when we submit the plans, yeah, they don't conform.
What's the maximum amount of parking you can have in each lot? If you have six bedrooms, you can have the, if you have six cars?
If you have ten bedrooms and you want six cars, these lots can be configured with six cars.
But in the maximum.
We're not, we're not asking for a parking, parking variance.
And let's come back to the sidewalk. You're not asking for a sidewalk?
We're going to put sidewalk, we're going to put sidewalk all the way along County Line Road. Whoever thought we weren't was crazy.
Okay. Who's that?
I don't know. It's in the report, Terry picked it up in the report, I read the report, we're not asking for it.
Okay, so let's go through the. How that sidewalks on.
Major.
I don't know. This one.
Clayton.
Clayton has sidewalks.
How, Major?
Major, the plan should not show sidewalks on Major, that's the.
They don't show sidewalks on this county line either, I think you're telling me.
Well, the one on Major, I will ask the board because that kind of makes sense. In the past, the board never asked for developing roads where you weren't on it. But first let's get to, I have four exhibits marked. Eight one is a tax map that shows where the property is on County Line, Clayton, Major. Eighty-two is the tax map on the other side of the street showing all the undersized lots in blue, that were done at seventy-seven feet wide and a minimum twelve thousand square feet. Uh, that's where the last application we thought based on that, we could have a majority of our lots twelve thousand square feet too. And we found out we were wrong, now we have four out of the seven lots as fifteen thousand and we are asking for three. Uh, but with respect to Major Avenue, Major Avenue, this whole area, and this as far as I can see is the last frontier in Lakewood. I've been, I think it was my first time in Lakewood in nineteen ninety-nine, somebody told me we're Brooklyners, that was the last frontier. And I let him say it, and then we heard it in other places, and I let him say it, this, I think this really is the last.
No one thought you were going to sell your house.
Uh, so, uh, and the board never used to ask for approvals like that, it certainly makes sense. Uh, with some arm twisting of the applicant, because he's been around a long time and never had to do that. Uh, we all get to a point where we never had to do things, but you have to do it. Uh, so we proposed putting half the sidewalk in, which is when the applicant went to the technical committee meeting, that he improved his side of the street so that whoever comes in to finish this off finishes their side of the street, you have a full road. Uh, and the result is yes, for a turnaround at the end of ours, which we both applied in case anybody was down there, they need to turn around. And then somebody comes in to develop something in Major and probably have a bridge that area will book fill in.
You said you won't put sidewalks on Major?
Uh, if.
Half the street.
Half the street, but sidewalks.
He did say that, he meant.
Half the, half the street.
Half the street, I understand, but sidewalks along your frontage?
If the board, if the board says we will, and I said I would ask for the waiver on this, not expecting to get on Major.
No.
But I will ask for that because I know that there is a possibility that the board could feel a little compassion for the client who's gone further than he's ever needed to and maybe say, no sidewalk there. Uh, as opposed to on County Line Road where I wouldn't even ask because I know we need sidewalks.
Okay, and then, what, this other one left to Clayton, so how with Clayton?
Clayton, Clayton, we're doing sidewalks on our side, Major, they tell us we're doing sidewalks on our side.
Yes, and then, and then. I don't feel that they don't.
And Elkins, Elkins, Elkins is a very true example, we're the Arden, so there's another ninety foot wide lot.
We don't touch on it.
And there'll be a temporary turnaround here, and when somebody develops this lot, it's moving in the back, it'll all connect and it'll be completed.
So is there a sleepy that's turned on?
Turnaround's going to be at the end of our property on Major.
For which, for who, coming from where?
If anybody was to come up here, we had a turnaround in this direction that Mr. Franklin suggested so that a guard could turn around. We're putting pavement here, if somebody drives down here, they do need a way to turn around.
Both?
Uh, either it'll be a half width. So that they can pull this back up and.
She too.
Right, so, uh, looking at Terry's report, he indicates the variance relief that we're requesting. Uh, in item two, minimum lot area, we're asking for three of the lots between twelve thousand and seven and twelve thousand and twenty-six. And as I indicated on item two, all these lots that are colored in are all similar in range to those. Uh, and then the other four lots that we're proposing are all fifteen thousand square foot plus. We're also asking for required minimum lot width from sixty-three point two to seventy-five feet, where a hundred feet is required. And again, that is consistent with the other lots in the neighborhood, the newer development across the street.
What's the smallest width across the street?
Across the street. Uh, the typical ones are seventy-seven foot wide, there's some that are on a cul-de-sac that are fifty-two, sixty. Um, and it's just due to the nature of this property that it's so deep that if we made a hundred.
Across the street now on the cul-de-sac, what's the smallest?
Uh, typically they're seventy-seven, ours are seventy-five.
But you have some that are sixty-three, you have sixty-seven.
Well, we have, uh, one sixty-three to sixty-seven is actually labeled incorrectly. Sixty-seven from the monument here, the lot is seventy-five feet wide. So we do have the one to sixty-three, that's seventy-five, uh, seventy-three, seventy-three, and then seventy-five.
Are we fully conforming without that exilon? That sixty-three feet long?
Well, if that area was shuffled into the other ones, it.
It'll be kosher.
It would be conforming, there'll be no late relief requests here. Uh, where, as I go through my testimony, you'll see we're asking for the relief because it's consistent with the area, it's going to be the same thing with the goals of the master plan.
Okay, so put in another property for Major Street, same line as that line as well. So, so really the sixty-seven over here is not a very, I mean, it's seventy-five.
The sixty-seven, right, the sixty-seven is a seventy-five.
And the sixty-three, the one point.
Sixty-three is a sixty-three, it's a fifteen thousand square foot lot, but it's only sixty-three feet wide, you're going to conform with the setbacks. Uh, it's the kind of a lot that, you know, when you look at the configuration, it's not going to stand out as being unusual. It's behind other lots that are very deep, so you'll have this spatial configuration that makes it not stand out as something out of the ordinary, especially when you have seventy-seven foot lots.
Well, it's really going to be like a stolen lot off East County Line Road, it's not going to be part of this.
That is correct, that is correct.
Please, continue your report.
So how's the sixty-seven in front of, you explained it.
At sixty-seven because there's a diagonal.
Monument.
Where the monuments are so that the curve works.
So that's always this scenario when it's a corner.
Not set here.
But sixty-seven is this dimension here with the front, with this measure and the setback, if you measure it at the setback, it goes all the way across in seventy-five.
Chairman?
Yes.
There was an issue, I'm recalling, it came up the last time this application was discussed, the lot from County Line. There was concern that for the board to approve it like this, and it to be presented to purchasers this way, that there's really nothing prohibiting a lot on County Line from actually building and having weight in the back, which may be disindangered to the houses that are then left behind. I'm just bringing that up as having that concern that applicant may be willing to, you know, stay within a certain footprint or portion of the lot. If that's an additional concern to the board again.
Okay, and what difference if he goes the first two houses or the last two?
Well, I think the concern is that houses that's throughed in may not realize that the house may have been built directly behind them.
By the time he sells it, he should know which way he's going to leave the house.
Yeah, I'm sure this applicant, it costs you more to put the house back because you've got to build driveway and stuff. And this applicant's not, they have it, they're spending more money than he needs to.
Okay. But it stays where it is, it slows. That's the plot line. To the, to the four liars, for the four lots, if there's a house, it will be, they're not going to want to step back. So is there anything next to this on this county line? Well, what's going on next to this?
There was a neighbor here, I spoke with a gentleman who owns a long lot next to County Line Lot. I don't remember if that's. Okay, he came into my office yesterday and said that he had, he started his fifteen foot size, I had a great hint, he came in to be telling me.
Well, does he, so what is the size of the lot? Residential? Now, as I said, how big of a lot, I really, like, how wide?
But the lots in here are typically seventy-five feet wide.
No, not that one.
Are you the lots here?
Yeah.
The lot in the corner is ninety feet wide.
Okay. And then going to the other, you see this is.
It's undeveloped now.
Across the street is a tax home lot, and then you get into the Carolina Street, so that's the rear of the county line.
And go further that way?
If you go further down here, uh. If you go further down here, uh.
The primary school. Oh, that's the school.
Yeah, that's, that's the school.
Okay, okay. Okay, please, please.
Uh, so the justification for the variance, the master plan of two thousand and seventeen, the background information, it talks about all the growth, uh, the conclusion is, uh, therefore, important that Lakewood Plan for residential development, the houses growing population, provisions statement says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles, uh, and, and my testimony that this was a smart growth and thinking of a piece of property, uh, and the addable was based on development that was approved through the street, municipal land use law, NJAC forty-four and fifty-five D two, under the purpose of the act, is to encourage the dislocation to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state, in a manner which will promote public health standards, morals, and general welfare. Uh, and it's my testimony that this does that, to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to well-being of persons, neighborhoods, uh, communities, regions, and preservation of the environment. Again, it's my testimony that that does it, fits in well with what's here. You have township property, you have school, you have something that's fitting in as the, uh, entrance to vacant land in the back that's going to be developed at some time. We're looking for C two variance, uh, so we need to show we're linked to a specific piece of property. Uh, we, we have a property here that the, the depth of it and the separation from the streets is rather large. The purpose of municipal land use law would be advanced. Uh, the variances can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, and you can see that to an extent when you open it up to the public, because we know in Lakewood, if there's public that's getting adversely impacted by it, they, they come and voice their opinion. Uh, the variance will not impair the intent purpose of zoning ordinance, and it fits in as compatible with the area, and the land behind it is vacant, uh, so it'll help the development of that land, and that's extending the sort of, uh, infrastructure, bringing the, uh, development towards the area in the back, so that they could also develop and provide housing opportunities.
What's on the side of Clayton?
The other side of Clayton?
High powered.
It is power lines here, and this is owned by the town.
Does the power line cross over this property at all?
No, there's no easement on this property. The easement is on the township property on the other side of the street.
Okay. But is there anything in the report that you don't agree with?
Uh, well, the, the first thing was item four, where it says we need a parking variance. We're no longer asking for parking variance.
Number five.
Terry's comment says, uh, revise the lot layout so there's no jogs. It's my testimony that those jogs are the minimums in nature and, and provide for a good layout of the property, and it's out of the case, there'll be notification or the buyer, so everybody knows it's there, and, and I would.
And that's where you leave your clock line?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, and then the only other item in the report, uh, with the, the shape tree, uh, recommendations, uh, and they're recommending, uh, their recommendation eight, so it's seventeen eight, and we don't want to comply with that. They're recommending buffers to the, the houses. Uh, if the board feels we need some kind of buffers, or there's something in the ordinance, we'll certainly do that. Uh, B and C of the recommendations, we, we are happy to accommodate.
Can you agree with anything else in the report?
Yes.
Okay. Let's just go, this is over. We're putting sidewalks on Clayton, on County Line, and then, uh, on major?
Yeah, we're asking for a waiver.
Okay, so, let me find out the board. Uh, Mr. Garfield?
Yeah.
What would you like to see on major avenue? Would you like to see sidewalks on a?
The under sidewalk.
Mr. Franklin?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Sable? You come back. Come back, yeah. Do you like some space? The whole, the whole sidewalk? Why are we doing, why are we doing half of major? What if that's going to help? I mean, you know, the board wants it.
It's going to help that the next person that comes in only has to build that.
What, what does half of major mean? It means, uh, from your property?
It means from the middle of the road to their property.
Or one way?
To have just the right side of the roadway down.
So, that the next, because the next person's going to come in and, and build on the other sides of major, right? And how wide?
Of course, you're going in, in a one way, then if you want to turn around, you're still.
They're not going to really.
There's nowhere really, there's not here, there's nowhere to go.
Right, it's, it's going to be extra parking for the end lot, that's what it's going to be.
How do they turn around? They got to back out?
No, there's going to be a hammerhead turnaround on the end, so if they come down here, they make a hammerhead and go out. And you also have a hammerhead on the other side of major, where trucks or emergency vehicles or anybody else have a place to, to back.
So if I'm coming up, please, and make a right turn on some major, which is going to be a half a road, eight feet wide?
No, it's going to be sixteen feet wide.
Sixteen feet wide? I want to turn around, but there's no hammerhead. That, not, doesn't show it.
It doesn't show it. We've agreed, we've agreed as part of the report, that we're going to do a hammerhead.
Oh, okay.
The hammerhead will be for the end, but it'll be a place where cars are pulling, back out, and.
So you're going to have two hammerheads?
Correct.
Okay, doesn't show.
Again, it doesn't.
There's nowhere to go either. So you have to leave the bond open on major, like all that, okay?
Yes.
Don't fix it until.
Yes.
So, the, the other side of Clayton, are we putting sidewalks on the other side of it? There's nothing. No, it says over here, you can township concrete curb?
We're, we're putting curb on the other side.
Oh, you are? You're not, okay. And it's owned by the township?
It's owned by the township. Yes.
And you said utilities over there?
Yes, we're, we're, we're running sewer and water in, into Clayton.
And no, the overhead, the electric wires are.
By the overhead electrical wires are, are on lot eighty-three, which is on the, on the west side of Clayton.
Okay. You're saying that this, this application is different than the one that was declared? Why?
So, so again, we come back with, while there's a lot number, the same, same set of lots, you know, so we, we configured it to make them more conforming, uh, we changed the layout. Uh, additionally, the previous application did not rule out the road, anything on major, uh, no sidewalk. So we're coming back now with a much more performing application.
See, if SLOH would have done the application, it would have not said revision, 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 revision. It would have inspired all over again.
Exactly.
I, I think if that's revision, you would be adding the.
Eight lots.
You know, it's the difference. You're adding the four ones.
You have the two hammerheads and you have a.
You have the two hammerheads, so maybe you have a little bit more trucks, and we get it now.
Okay, I'm, I'm okay with that.
I believe you were following on sidewalks on major.
I know, I got all this.
Oh, you did?
Mr. Meyer.
Yeah, hammer.
You want the sidewalks on major?
Yeah.
Okay, so basically, you have the.
Sidewalks on, on all roads.
Okay.
Every single property over here is, is, is a major variance, which is correct. And it's fifteen on square feet.
But a fifteen, for the fifteen thousand square foot lots, have, have a lot width variance.
Have four of them required, and has twelve, twelve, instead of fifteen.
Three, three lots have twelve thousand instead of fifteen.
And that property across the street all has?
Yes, the properties across the street predominantly have.
And Clayton is, is, how, how is Clayton? And that's, that's.
Carolina. Carolina, those are our fifteen lots. Those are all, they were developed before I were in the Lakewood.
Okay.
We're looking here, we have, we're handling here, testifies traffic.
He submitted a report, it, it shows level of service state.
Okay, my, my only question, coming out of Clayton, are we making a, a right in right out?
That's a full, no, coming out of Clayton, it's a full intersection, and this is going into the back. There'll probably be an interconnection out to Ridge.
I'm sure.
Yes, but, uh, you know, it's compared to, uh, West County Line, the, 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 in this area, it turns out to be like, for now.
So what's going to come through it?
Well, ten people or more, they still go away out to Ridge, and there, and there is a big property in that area, behind a school.
Okay, I would open it to the public. Anybody from the public might to be heard? That hurts like one. Not close to the garden. Okay, come in nicely.
You're not going into her.
No.
Okay, that, that's a, I would ask, I would ask for motion on this application.
Okay.
There's a motion at a second, so we're denying the application. So I think a roll call.
Okay, another way to supply.
Okay.
Fine? Give it some.
He said no.
Okay, so roll call.
So a affirmative vote would be to go along with the denial, so affirmative means that you agree to deny. Mr. Garfield?
I have a question.
Okay, Mr. Franklin?
So, Mr. Franklin, you're in favor of the approval of that? Correct.
Mr. Sable?
He's not a super voter.
Okay, so.
He's both favorite in motion on the, he's both favorite motion to the IDF.
No.
Mr. Myers?
Um.
Okay, and Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
So I have two extensions, two to deny and one to not deny, I just, two to not deny, I'm sorry, so it's two, agree to deny, and two, do not agree with the motion to deny. So, guys, the motion fails.
It's, it's tied.
We'd be open to other motions.
Right, right, that motion, the motion to deny, the application does not pass.
So we have, we have, we were asked to put up something.
So there, you need a motion to approve it, has a affirmative.
I mean, is there something to do with this one more lot over there?
I would, I would. Yeah. We always perform a lot. The width might be a difference?
We do switch ones.
We do set number one point zero seven.
The one, the one block in County Line? Want to make it only, make it only six lots?
Six, six lots. The width will still be conservative, it's an issue of the properties.
But they're all recent forty lots.
Well, we, we could have looked out losing the lot, maybe with that, it'd be just easy.
But I think what you're hearing though, is they want you to get rid of that lot.
Well, we're hearing, we're hearing from one board member to, to vote it against the, so I, I think we'd like an opportunity.
Look, they, they can vote it up or down, but I don't have a problem with this dialogue. Let me ask a question. The, the members who are in favor of an approval without that lot that stuck on the end there, who, who would approve this if, if, uh, we did not have that lot?
I would.
That's one. That's two.
I, I, I voted yes, I voted no, so I, I would, I was okay even with that one.
So you would, then you would vote?
I would definitely vote, I would definitely vote for it.
Yeah, that, that, that was a lot, so you have, you have, uh.
I think we have a four yeses without that lot.
I believe we'd be open to motions.
You'll be unanimous.
Without plan changes, though, before you.
I think we'll be unanimous, so.
Can I just, you know, this is, some boards will not do this. I don't have a problem, I think it's, I think it's a fact that, I think it, it cuts through the red tape. You know, some boards will just vote it down, so I don't have a problem after voting, uh, a tie vote to deny, to find out what's wrong with the application.
And make a motion, make a motion.
I would just, I, only because of the past, I know when we start doing the things, going off the fly, we end up coming back, and the correspondence end up with the clarify. At this, I'm, here's the concern, this is actually, I want to see if we can make this application better, um, to see if we can tweak it a little bit. I would request that we table it until we've done the engineers properly, because I, I don't even want to say that we, we're not.
So I think you got a pretty clear message, but.
Yes.
We're usually, we're not in this, I don't think, the lot, so we want to come back with a clean.
We want, we want to see what we can do, and just we get.
Is that okay with everybody?
Okay.
Yep. So we're going to, so we can come back? So we're going to adjourn this, we're going to get a new date, the applicant told me to submit revised plans and forward this to the comments of the board, that's why I'm going to deny the law.
Well, if they want to say we can, revise, I'm not sure we're going to try to.
Yeah, and this, well, we heard is this lot's width was very narrow.
I, I don't have a problem with that, just I can hear a clear message from the board, but.
Come back with a better plan, come back with a better plan.
Is everyone in favor of that?
Yeah, I am in favor.
What happens if we vote now to deny, and then we come back with a new application?
No, one question is no. There's no reason to deny right now, so most fair.
Right, right now, you should ask for a motion to, to carry this, adjourn it to do the, the applicant revised the plan.
Okay, we have to, we moved on second?